And welcome to the Town of Lake Placid Government Center this eighth day of September, 5:30 PM in the evening. First of all, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here tonight. We appreciate you being here. And at this time, I have a couple who's going to come around town and present each of you with a piece of our puzzle. Well, I guess we could. We'll go ahead and do the roll call first, if you would, clerk.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Everhart?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll pass these out. And what we've been emphasizing for quite a while now is being a family and coming together as a community. And that's why we developed these pieces of the puzzle. Each one of us is a piece of the, a piece of Lake Placid. So we'd like for each of you to become a part of that. Now, we understand all of you probably don't want to become part of our family, and that's okay, too. But for those that do, we appreciate you doing it, and we hope you will join us to not only help this council, but to help the great town of Lake Placid. Few things that are happening under the comprehensive regional planning. Oh, we need to do that first, yes. Sorry Reverend Norris. Just got a lot I'm trying to get through. If everybody makes sure your phones are either off and vibrate. At this time, it's always a pleasure to have Reverend Norris from the Lutheran Church here with us, who's going to lead us in our invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Actually, tonight, I'm here tonight substituting for Reverend Raymond Cameron, who a week ago Sunday retired after forty years of ministry at the first Presbyterian church here in Lake Placid. And he and his wife, Clennell, are now with their daughter, Rachel, who is expecting her fourth child. So I'm here in Ray's place. So let us pray. "Gracious God, as these men and women selected to serve this community in the duty of government, governance, I pray that you will grant each wisdom and clarity of thought as they deliberate important issues before them. Grant each of these individuals with a heart of steadfast service and dedication to our town, the businesses, and the residents. Let no distractions disrupt their train of thought, and not their own self-interest, but the best interests of our community be their desired collective decisions. As we approach the twenty-fourth anniversary of nine eleven, let us never forget the travesty and the horror of that day, now and for generations to come. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go into Consent Agenda One, A through D.
I'll make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda One. Second?
All right, we may have a motion in a second. Any comments from the podium?
Just a couple. Eva, on one of the, the August eleventh minutes, all of the motions are off. It's saying approved five to zero, four to one. So maybe take a look and correct those. And then, actually, on the budget, the police department is overrun in total one hundred and eleven percent. And I think the last month, I asked the question because it was kind of trending towards that, at what point does a budget amendment or a discussion need to take place? I know in our Munich Code, it talks about, you know, when, when we run over. And it was like if it's a capital item, we'd bring the budget amendment at that time. But if it's individual line items, it's okay until the department as a total runs over. So will that be like next month? Or I was thinking that would be this month, you know, when we do have a department that runs over in their budget? What's our process in order to control it? Or is it just we have to do a budget amendment? And then where does it come from when it's mid-year? I mean, I've got it at one hundred and eleven percent as of July, I think, numbers. Right. And that's what I thought. So just so, so going forward, we'll do that. But we haven't on, on at least this department. I mean, there's another one that's closed, but it's probably going to be okay. So, so next month?
That'd be a Mark question. Are you going to bring a budget amendment back to council next month?
No intention of bringing one back, no. The issues that caused us to run over budget have been brought up previously here, such as crashed patrol cars and happened to replace them. There's, those are unavoidable expenses. There's nothing I could have done to prevent that, as well as the funds for our officers to work through hurricanes and the under-budgeting for special details. Those were things that were beyond my control.
And that's fine, but they need to be documented in the process and brought forward. So then we make the motion and we approve the budget amendment. So it's, and again, I'm just kind of stating what law says, is once it runs over, we need to do a budget amendment to bring it back in line. So I'm not, I'm not saying that what you've done is wrong, but we need to document it, get it approved, and then determine where in the budget it's going to come from. I mean, that's the process, right? If a department runs over its budget mid-year, a budget amendment needs to come forward. So we discuss it, we'll make a motion, and we'll approve it because it's already run over. But then we'll determine for the remaining period, you know, what impact that's going to have.
Are you taking the capital as for the capital projects and stuff that he had? And are you subtracting that before?
Sure.
The one hundred and ten percent?
Sure, sure. Yeah, you can't, you can't say his budget is increased by one point six million dollar police department when no spending. I'm talking the general fund. His operating budget. The things he said, so that, I mean, those are fine, but they just need to be explained, documented, and we move on.
He did come back with the vehicles, and he did request that those vehicles got replaced. So he would bring them back, every item that's going to really significant affect that budget. So he have done that.
That was for the capital, right, but not?
It was for the vehicles.
Yeah, I call that capital.
Okay. But I get with Mark, and we'll see where he's at in his budget, and if we just want to bring him back to you.
It's, it's my understanding that that's not been the typical practice, is that we typically come back towards the end of the year, and then we do a true-up. So Rachel, could you speak to that? Because that's been the typical practice. But I do know that Mark has brought back the vehicles, as we just stated. And then the other was for, due to hurricanes.
Yes, because what I think Ms. Charles had did, she took out the capital as far as the police department and out of the vehicles. She took all that stuff out to come up to, what is the operating?
Operating fund, right, your operating expenses.
Right. So even though those items already budgeted, he's still under budget.
Right. And, and I mean, and I appreciate, and we have talked about that with FEMA, with a lot of the special details that we're doing. It's a great awareness that your budget is being run over by other things, and we need to be aware of that because, you know, even tonight, we've got requests to spend more on your budget. So it's, it's a how much are we spending that you haven't been controlling? And then what do we need to do for the next year's budget to make sure that every year? Because last year, you ran over one hundred and thirty-five thousand. This year, right now, it's one twenty-six. It, you know, and again, I'm not questioning it. It's the awareness and what is it to make sure we're budgeting right.
A lot of the things that cause that are things that we cannot control. I can't control if a patrol car is going to get totaled. I can't. There's no way to project that or say that's going to happen. It's something that happens that you can't control. It's not anything you can plan for or budget for.
Right. But that's where you bring the budget amendment. It's approved, and we move on.
Which was done.
Right.
So I'm not sure what you're asking, then.
I think what you had said is the special detail, the overtime.
The special detail. It was initially last year put into my budget at more than it was. It was cut in half. I can't control if the budget was cut last year, and we're still approving these, these details. If that's done, it has to come out of my budget, but it's beyond my control. I've ensured this year it is in the budget to cover all the details that we waive fees on, so that it's in there. Now, if we have a hurricane and we put disaster pay under special detail again, I can't control that. I don't believe that's an appropriate place to put it, but that's where it wound up. So it came out of special detail for disaster pay. Again, beyond my control, not something I can budget for, something I can plan for. A hurricane happens. It's a natural disaster. We have to go forward with it. There was nothing that I could do to change that or anything I could bring back and say, hey, this happened.
And we weren't able to charge that to FEMA?
No.
And I might say, on the consent agenda, we, just for the public, the consent agenda is a approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, Town Council Budget Workshop, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and Budget Workshop, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. That's just approval of the minutes, approval of the agenda. Now, we're to see approval of the departmental financial reports for August twenty twenty-five, and approval of all duly authorized monthly bills for August twenty five, twenty twenty-five. So what part of that are you disagreeing with, please?
See, the financial reports.
So approval of the departmental financial reports for August twenty twenty-five. Okay, so are we going to move forward? Do I need to pull that out of my motion so we can get on with?
I, I think it can be part of the motion, just with the budget amendment that's needed. And that would be for the next month. You're not going to do it tonight. It's like, it's even though, I mean, what did you say, Charlotte? We typically haven't done that, but we should do that. And so those are just things that we should be doing once a budget, a department runs over, even before they run over, we should be coming and say, here's where we're at. We're not going to hit our budget, and here's what we need to do.
I think that you're a little bit premature in what you're doing. I don't, I don't disagree with the fact that we may need a budget amendment. However, we are approving the departmental financial reports. We're saying that we want to approve that these reports are correct. This is not saying that we will or will not do a budget amendment. That has nothing to do with that. It has to say that these are, in fact, we agree with, with these financials that are on here. And it seems like that you're intent upon trying to point out to the public in a public session like this that the police department runs over budget, and going back to the point where you tried to get rid of the police department a month ago. This is another one of those things where we're going to bring it up again, and again, and again, and again, and we're going to shoot it down again, and again, and again, and again. We have to make budget amendments at the end of the year. We are in September. This is almost the end of the year. So they will come, I guess, before the council, either at the next meeting or at the October meeting. But any department that's over budget, if I understand correctly, would have to have these budget amendments to, in order to bring everything back into line for the next year. Okay? Not unusual, not unusual. The public safety is usually over a little bit, or a lot, as you say. And if you look at one year to the next, it's not near the percentage over that you keep trying to sell. It is not. So I'm saying let's approve these financial reports because we're attesting to the veracity of these reports, not to the budget or the budget amendment.
I have, okay, I have a very simple comment and correction. This is regarding the August eleventh minutes, where there was a discussion about looking into the efficiencies of the police department and the sheriff's collaboration. I was mischaracterized in social media as not wanting to look at improving efficiencies. And I would like to have the minutes amended to say that twice in that conversation, I asked that the scope of the study be limited to day-to-day operations, the police department, and I was in favor of improving efficiencies.
Oh, if you want to go down social media and the news on how we're all mischaracterized, that's a whole meeting in itself.
I know. But at least, if you would, courtesy of putting in the minutes, that in the discussion, Councilmember Everhart asked that, twice asked that the scope of the study be limited to day-to-day operations. Fifteen words.
Well, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Could I call for the vote, please?
Can I say something? On behalf of my town clerk, and to be able to recognize her and also our deputy clerk, I need to bring up and Bert interject at any time. But we've been asked a lot of questions when it comes to minutes, and what's recorded and what's not recorded. And so I have an email that I can read that we brought prepared for this, just in case. So this is just to preempt. But I will not say who it's from. I will read it. "I just got a copy of the June ninth meeting minutes from the August packet. There are several problems with the item on pickleball courts. It is written in a way that is very favorable to pickleball. Only one, Charlie Wilson, of the speakers promoting the courts, lives in the town. None of the others pay taxes to the town. The mayor told the one pickleball player that pickleball will go out to bid. His statement is not included in the minutes. Furthermore, the writer of the minutes declares that we have strong support. The bulk of that declared support comes from the people who live in Sebring. Wow. Ray Roy speaks for seven minutes. What happened to the three-minute rule? Josie Calmly spoke in opposition to the courts. The mayor was ready to cut, to cut was her off at three minutes. She is opposed to the courts. She also mentioned the five hundred-plus signatures in opposition to the courts. That's not mentioned. Casey Hart said that the folks who designed all the fields in Lake June Park do not recommend putting pickleball in a waterfront park. That is not included in the minutes. Coach Mike, the youth director of recreation in Lake Placid, spoke in opposition to the pickleball in the park. He coaches kids in the green space of Lake June Park to play flag football. He basically said the process of pickleball courts in the park is kind of sneaky. He said other property options would be way better. He also questioned why eight pickleball courts. He addressed many other issues, including the lack of any tournaments in Lake June Park in twenty-five years, and the fact that no one is asking for volunteers. Yet, no, not one of his comments are included in the meeting minutes. It is interesting to me that people who speak in opposition to the courts are excluded from the minutes of the meetings. The minutes from that meeting need to be corrected to reflect what was actually said." This individual goes on to basically insinuate that our minutes are being biased, and that our town clerk is writing them in favor, and that's not the case. I will speak on her behalf, because she did bring this up, but under section two eight six point zero one one two, Florida statutes state that the legal obligation is to ensure that minutes are promptly recorded, open to public inspection, and prepared as a summary of action items taken. Action items. And in my experience, where I have served as a previous town clerk, I can tell you that there was a municipality who was in trouble because we were getting into the nitty-gritty details. There is a reason why we have things outlined the way that they are. It is very difficult, and we understand, when we have the public, that the public can be very, they have their own opinions. They're welcome to have those. They can express them. They're welcome to do that. Everybody is entitled to that. We can't stop the way that people perceive them and how they want us to write them. And so our town clerk is meeting the statute and the Florida statute and the requirements. If we do this every time and go back and forth, we'll be continually changing minutes to counteract the public. Go ahead.
I would like you to read what I wrote to you.
You would? Okay, I will be happy to, yes.
Yes, the record.
"Charlotte, I will not respond to this email, but must place the following on the official record. As town clerk, my approach to preparing meeting minutes has always been to summarize the meeting to the best of my ability to capture the actions taken in the general substance of the discussion. In addition to non-action discussion, I have faithfully carried out this responsibility under both this council and prior councils. Despite this, I have faced repeated accusations these last couple of years, for example, for not legally noticing meetings or items that were untrue, and now for preparing biased minutes. These accusations directly question both my integrity and the personal pride I take in ensuring transparency in every part of my work. I want to be clear, any corrections or amendments to the minutes are not made by me individually or members of the general public, but are formally approved by the Town Council at a duly noticed public meeting." She also references the section two eight six point zero one one, Florida statutes. My legal obligation is to ensure that minutes are promptly recorded, open to public inspection, and prepared as summary of actions taken in substance of discussion, not a verbatim transcript. The Attorney General has further clarified that minutes may be a brief summary or notes of events, and that a verbatim record is not required. In light of these repeated challenges to my neutrality, I am formally moving to action minutes unless council denies me. This would ensure that the official record reflects only the motions and actions taken, a summary of action items only, removing any room for perception of bias while still fully meeting statutory requirements. This change is necessary to, one, protect the credibility and transparency of the clerk's office, two, reinforce public trust that the minutes are impartial, and allow me to continue performing my duties with integrity and objectivity without my personal commitment to transparency being questioned."
I would again call for the vote, please.
It's coming, it's coming.
Do you want to take from the audience?
No, because she was.
I've called for the vote, please.
All right, is there anything else on Consent Agenda One? Seemed like we got off a little bit, but that's okay. Nothing else from, nothing else from the podium? I'll take it to the audience? Just on the agenda?
Yes. I'm Kira Denby. Address is two zero four Captiva Way Northeast in Lake Placid. Lake Placid Police Department's been helping me a lot, and I'm still working on stuff to help kids, but they need upgrades. They need upgrades to be able to help me to help the kids. And it's funny listening to that, and then pickleball courts. Why are we putting, like, why are you questioning? Have you guys worked in their shoes for a day and seen what they have to deal with? Because they deal with a lot, and they're crammed in a tiny little place right now. And I can't get my help without them getting the proper upgrades. So I, it's hard for me to hear about pickleball courts. I mean, you can use a tennis court. Just bring chalk if you have a problem with it. Give them money to the police department. That's all I have to say.
Okay, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go to public comment. I have a couple requests here to speak. First is Kara Denby. You're first, okay.
Do I need to say my name again?
Say your name and address again.
Kira Denby, two oh four Captiva Way Northeast, Lake Placid. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to bring attention to something that is not only important to me as a parent, but as a member of our community. My goal here is to inform other parents of why it is important to always background-check everyone that is to be alone with your child, especially at private schools. Last year, my daughter, it was her first year in private school, and we were able to use the scholarship to pay for the tuition. My daughter loved the new school until her teacher fell ill and another person was hired to teach the class. Suddenly, my daughter was afraid to go to school, and it created stress in our family. I started doing some research and found out that the new teacher had been removed previously from her teaching position by the Florida Board of Education for mistreating children over ten years ago, and they stated that she is never allowed to be a teacher again at a public or private school. So how was she able to be hired at my daughter's school where she repeated, repeated the same abusive behavior? Here's how. There are holes in the system for private schools. If you put your child in a private school that is a nonprofit and does not accept the scholarship, they can make their own rules, and you have no protection at the end of the day. Schools that are a nonprofit that do accept the scholarship must have certified teachers, and they must pass a level-two background or fingerprint check if they are not a certified teacher. But there's no one in charge to make sure these things happen, so plenty fall through the cracks. And another example, there's a teacher in Orlando that just got arrested. He was able to pass the same background check that people from this public school was able to as well. He was arrested recently because they just found out about his record in a different state. I trusted the founder of the school to keep the children safe. She was the last person, I would have guessed, that would have put our children in danger. I was wrong. Regardless of where you send your children to school, always pay attention to any sudden changes in their behavior and find out why, because there's usually always a reason. I was able to take the information I found and make sure it got into the right hands. As a result, the teacher was fired, and the founder was pretty much forced to sell the school to new owners. Thank you for all the teachers that believed in me. And when I gave them the information, they fought for the safety of the children, and they were able to buy the school, change the name. And to me, those teachers are heroes. As teachers, if you see something, know you're allowed to report it without the fear of losing your job. If someone tries to fire you for that, you can sue them. Know your rights. If you don't know them, you can always come to me, and I'll help you for free. Although it took many months of research, I wanted, all I wanted was for all the children to be safe and to have great school experiences, and now they are. We are still working through some injustices that happened with the courts, but that is for a different day. And thank you, guys, at our local department, because they're the only ones that have been also given up on us and continue to fight for us every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Lisa Shin.
Lisa Shin, five seventy-one Bottle Brush Avenue, Lake Placid. Good evening. My name is Lisa Shin, and I'm representing the Greater Federation of Women's Clubs as the treasurer of the Lake Placid Junior Women's Club. We are one of the five oh one C three organizations in Lake Placid, and our mission is to aid and support our community through, through worthy projects. I find it fitting that the puzzle piece is basically what I'm speaking about, how we work together as town and service organizations to better our community. Each year, we raise funds through our events so that we can then donate our proceeds to various community organizations in Lake Placid and Highlands County. Some of those organizations include the Eddie May Foundation, Man of Ministries, the Lake Placid Middle School, Dragons' Den, Positive Effects, Christmas Angels, Heartland for Children, One Hope United, Peace River Center, Speak Up for Children, Operation Christmas Shoebox, Veterans Flight of Honor. Shoebox, Veterans Flight of Honor, Reets Across America, and more. Most of these are local, while a few are organizations that are projects of GFWC Florida. Our strongest event in the last three years has been our tea party, which just last year re-transitioned into our masquerade ball. This is where the large majority of our fundraising comes from, and because we were able to rent the Government Center's community room, we were able to directly pass on our proceeds to the organizations mentioned. For comparison, prior to us using the Government Center, our average proceeds were approximately three thousand dollars. Since using the facility, our average proceeds went up to over five thousand dollars. Because of this, originally, we were donating on average two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars per charity. Now we have been able to donate more than five hundred dollars per charity, almost doubling those donations. I bring up these figures to emphasize that our ability to rent the space here directly affects the local charities and community organizations we strive to help. The decision at the May council meeting to halt all reservations will have a direct impact on the people and animals that are supported by these valuable organizations. So we request a reconsideration of the decision to discontinue the rental of the room. A possible compromise for the issues regarding the room may be to charge nonprofits a larger deposit versus a larger fee. This would ensure that you would not be unfairly affecting the ability of nonprofits to benefit the community with their fundraising, while at the same time maintaining the right to keep more of the deposit if the room is not taken care of properly. We respectfully ask for your consideration in this matter. Thank you for your time.
Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, hearing them, we'll move on. All right, number three is mayor's report. I, I got something that I think is kinda comical in a way. The past week to ten days, I've had several people of the community come into the hardware store that I manage and reference me about my health. Couldn't figure out what was going on till today, and I found out that there are those in the community have decided they know more about my health than myself, and are telling people that my health is bad, and that I am not going to run for mayor in April. As far as I know, I got my arms, I've got my head, my doctor says I'm in good health. I think I'm in pretty good shape. So, whether these are rumors, end to end use, untruth, or lies, whatever you say is not hurting me. It's only hurting yourself. And these kind of comments don't, don't help anybody. Uh, I don't take it personal, because I, I know that I'm in good health. I know I'm not going anywhere, and I know I'm going to be here to represent the town the best I can, and I just want each and every one of you to know that. And if you hear talk out there, uh, please, do your best to, to stop it, or have them come talk to me, and I'll make an appointment with my doctor, and we'll go together and get this thing figured out. Okay? Thank you. We've got a lot going on. We're preparing a comprehensive plan, uh, and we're active with the Highlands County wide update. The Lake Placid Regional Planning will be in full force this fall, and they'll help us in, in guiding growth and land use decisions. Downtown, our revitalization becomes a top priority. Uh, our CRA is working diligently to come up with different things to, uh, promote Lake Placid. You've probably seen the flowers and the big pots, and, you know, they've, they've always coming up with ideas and things, and we appreciate all they do. Uh, and they're not always about looks, they're about building pride and preserving our character as the town of mural and Caladium capital of the world. And even though that's, uh, sounds trite, it's not. Lake Placid gets a lot of attention all across the country because of our murals and our Caladium. Uh, on September eighteenth, our town administrator will be meeting with Central Florida Regional Planning to review the preliminary results that were completed in August, and we'll have a report coming back on that. Code enforcement's in full swing, and there are some foreclosures that are coming up that our attorney will be looking at. Uh, the tower property with Mr. Swer, his health has prevented him from, from being here, but we're scheduled to meet with him in October, and he plans on meeting with each of the council members beforehand, and I hope he can do that. And on a positive note, we have several employees that I would like to point out. Chief Snyder, he's been with us for twenty-seven years. Shelley Camassa, she's not here, but she's been with us eighteen years this month. Stuart Troutman, I see him in the back, fifteen years. Thank you, Stuart. Stephen Arnison and Luis Carino have been with us four years, and we have two new ones that will be with us a year this month, Jacob Dubano and, and Charlotte Rodriguez. So. And, and, and to me, these, these numbers reflect, uh, these milestones reflect more than numbers. They reflect commitment, loyalty, and the heart that what I think makes Lake Placid a strong community. And on behalf of the town and myself, I, I want to thank each and every one of you for being a vital part of what we are. And in, in closing, I want to thank each of you again for being here. Uh, every one of you, whether you agree with what we do or don't, you're an essential piece of the town of Lake Placid. And when these pieces are put together, we make something that's stronger than any one of us could ever do alone. Just remember that. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I just have one quick comment?
Yeah.
I just have one quick comment. I remember last year when we were swearing in Charlotte as our town administrator, she never told us that when she left this meeting, she was going out and getting married. And so, we kept her here till heaven knows when in the middle of the night, because we were going forever, and we didn't know that she was going to get married, and sure enough, she did. So it's also her wedding anniversary. So congratulations.
All right, number four, presentation, citizen on the agenda. The first, uh, request event fee waivers, the annual Halloween block party, Serenya Piple? Yeah, she's not here.
I can read it.
Okay.
So Ms. Piple and Ms. Bass are both requesting event fee and deposit waivers, and are both nonprofit organizations. Historically, Ms. Piple has held two events in the town of Lake Placid, the Easter event where no waiver is requested and all fees have been paid. The second is the annual Halloween block party event fee and deposit waiver request for two thousand ninety-eight, plus the deposit of a hundred and fifty, which would be two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The second would be Miracle League, is, this is a new event in the town of Lake Placid. It's the annual Merry Market for the fees and deposit waiver request of three hundred and fifty dollars, and the deposit of a hundred and fifty dollars for a total of five hundred dollars. It is the staff's recommendation to approve both events until policies and procedures can be established to address fees and fee waiver requests. And there is a recommended motion.
I believe Ms. Bass is here. Did you want to say anything, or? No? Yes?
Do you want to talk about that?
Just, thank you for being here.
Do we need to make a motion in a second in order for us to discuss these things? So I would make a motion to approve the annual Halloween block party and the annual Merry Market event fee and deposit waiver requests.
A second.
All right, we have a s- motion and a second for discussion.
So with reference to budget overages in the police department, here we go again. Um, and I think it's important that we take a look at, when we're doing these waivers, that if it's not, i- if it's not in the same line item, or if it's not like written exactly right, so you can put A plus B to equal a, a net zero, if you will, okay? Then I think it's very difficult, and, and where we run into trouble is, like Ms. Charles, she's very good at finances, she looks at all this stuff, and thank goodness you do. But, but when you look at the overages, for instance, in special detail, that's where this waiver is going to come from. If we didn't do the waiver, let's say we did charge it, it's thirteen hundred and twenty dollars if I remember correctly, then that money would come in to the town, and that would need, would need be to offset what the police chief is over in special detail. But I think it doesn't quite read that way unless you know that you've got to look at this income account and compare it with this expense account, and there are possibly other things in this income account that, that don't necessarily offset that particular expense account, but to be able to look at it in the same way. And then if you're only looking at expenses, and you're only looking at the overages and expenses, you're not seeing that there was a, a corresponding entry to offset some of that. So while I totally agree with approving these fee waivers, I would like to see in the future as we go forward, that we have a way to tell, like, for instance, if God forbid, we get a hurricane, and we have some FEMA money that comes in to, to help offset any, oh, um, overtime with the police department, I don't know if it even will, but, so that it could be easily reconciled to that effect. If we do not approve free fee waivers in the future, and police department funds are expended in special detail, that those fees are easily seen to offset that, so that we don't have this disparity and this, uh, kind of confusion. Just, just a note.
So I'll say it a little different, and I, I'm surprised that we combine two together versus typically we have, you know, separate ones, but, you know, as far as the Miracle League, is theirs is very minimal, and, you know, it's not closing the road. I think where we start running into the fees is when we need to close the road, and we've got, um, our different department to get out there and put the road closure signs, we've got the police department, um, to do, um, the, and I think it's on this one, you've got four people, right? You've got four people at fifty-five dollars, and that's what's driving up the cost.
Yes, it is four because it draws such a large crowd.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, and, and I'll continue to say, my concern, I, I don't have a concern on waiving park fees, rather than rent the park, we waive it. But when we're incurring actual cost to the town, then I, I don't know that the town residents should be paying for that versus the event itself. And I know each one speaks for itself, and there's not, I, I didn't understand what you were saying about income coming in for this, because this is truly, that runs over his special detail budget. And then you also have, um, supplies, you know, for, um, the garbage and that, which, again, are minimal, but, I mean, we had, um, police department expenses for the Caladium Festival of, what, eight thousand dollars? Um, and thank goodness, they were able to get money from TDC for that, didn't come our way, but they got money. And then we had the Caladium Festival, so absolutely, his budget is overrunning, and I don't think this new budget, we have enough for police details for all of the different things. So, I mean, that, that's just, and I, and I know I'm only one person here, but it's the, when does it become the taxpayers of the town that are paying for these things versus the event itself?
And I think that's a very good question, I, I really do. Um, and, um, the difference between the Halloween event and the Merry Market event is, yes, there's a street closure, but the bigger issue is the amount of people. Um, and over two thousand people are expected at the Halloween event, and, and not nearly as many at Merry Market, and Merry Market is a, a more closed, you know, venue, understanding that. But, um, and I, and I didn't mean to confuse you by saying, uh, what I said about the, the money coming in, the money going out. It is not in this particular case, but in going forward. For instance, some events, I'd rather not mention them, I, individually right now, because they're not here to defend themselves, but some events that we have in the town are not not-for-profit, they are for-profit enterprises. And so, yes, those folks should definitely be paying for their garbage and their police coverage and, and all of that, because they're for-profit things. Then there are events like this, like the Halloween event and the Merry Market event, that are part of what makes our town special. What, they are part of maybe why you thought it was a great idea to move here. So let's not kill the great idea that you thought to move here because they have these fun things by, by overtaxing them. However, um, there's got to be a nice little medium, you know, in there, but when there are, when they are nonprofit, not-for-profit things that add to the ambiance of the town of Lake Placid, I believe that becomes a cost of doing business for us. Now, if you want to talk about efficiencies with the sheriff's office, if you'd like to take those special details and toss them over to the sheriff's office, then we wouldn't have to have this conversation, but then the people would be paying more than we charge for the sheriff's office for their special details to come in and do these events, and I don't think that's what we want to do in a town of Lake Placid. So, um, just, just my take on that. And the, the chief has budgeted, I believe, fifteen thousand dollars in his budget this coming year, starting October first, on special detail, and that's to cover functions like this.
Just to make a correction, it's actually thirty thousand.
Thirteen thou- thirteen.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, thank you. So it's thirty thousand dollars to, to cover events like this. But then again, if, if we do charge people, and we don't put that in a, in an account that is easily reconciled back to that expense part, the income reconciling with the expense, you know how that goes, then we aren't going to see how it ever levels out.
Right, so, so you've got thirty thousand for special detail for these type of events, or for special detail in total?
These types of events, I have thirty thousand in my budget for that.
Yeah, because.
The special detail, when we do other special details that are paid, do not come out of the budget, they're paid for by the people. It is a zero dollar event, so I do not budget for that.
Right, right.
Um, the actual cost of special details, not including the Halloween event, because I did not have that on the list, it was only done once when I did this list, was twenty-five thousand and eighty dollars for all the events that we waive fees on each year. This was presented at, uh, last year's budget time as well, that's why I requested more than fifteen thousand in my budget then. It was denied. That is why we are going over in these fields, because it was denied, but we're still waiving the fees. I made sure this year I had a little extra in case you decided to waive fees on an additional event that requires law enforcement. So I've added a little bit extra in there to ensure that we are covered in our budget if we decide to do that. Um, the Halloween event does not cost enough that it would put me over budget in this. I have more than enough in the budget to cover it.
Right, so just for perspective, is special detail actual through September of this year's forty-four thousand?
Yes, but that's also including the disaster pay.
Right.
That went out to pay for everybody working the hurricane. You're also not subtracting the monies that were taken in on special detail, so when you're looking at that, you're trying to say, this is how much you've spent, but you're not taking away what has been made, or what would zero out in that from what has been brought in on special detail.
Yeah, fair enough.
So if we're going to give the numbers, we need to give the accurate numbers.
Well, and, and I'm just reading the budget reports where we budgeted ten thousand and spent forty-four. So just for clarity, for this year, it's thirty thousand in special detail for special events?
Yes.
But not including this twenty-five hundred?
No, that is included in this. I'm looking at a sheet I have here that I did for last year, that it was given to council last year, so all of you should still have a copy of it. That was a yearly reoccurring events cost breakdown for the police department, which I submitted to each and every council member last year to ensure that you knew how much each event costs beforehand, and how much I needed in the special detail account. I was still denied the amount in the detail account, and we chose to go ahead and, and waive all the fees anyway. So yes, I am over budget, but you were given all the information in advance for that, and knew that I would be over budget if we waived all those fees. I tried to educate the council and give them all the information in advance, so that it wouldn't come back, and you're saying, just like tonight, that I'm over budget, and you need to know why. Well, this is why. When I try to give you the information in advance, you need to pay attention and look at it, and not come back to me and say at the end, hey, you're over budget, why are you doing this? Well, I told you at the beginning, this is what's going to happen. This year, I'm trying to make sure in our budget, we have the money to cover all that. It is in there, the thirty thousand to cover these special details. Anything over that, if you choose to add events to this? Anything over that, if you choose to add events to this after this that are not in my budget, it's going to go over again. So I can't control that.
And I mean, it's a hard one because you love these events and you love them to come, but at the same time, is it's the town's budget that's paying for it and we're going in with an 18% increase. So it's really a tough one and I get it, but it's one at a time. And Charlotte, I think, you know, that's one of the things that we said that we were going to try to get, you know, decisions made on the fees.
Well, I just think, I want to say, okay, so if he's over budget in the expense side, possibly it's over budget on the income side as well when we don't charge the fees, if in fact we don't, and I'm talking about going forward, not past, but going forward, if we choose not to charge the fees, then there should be a surplus in an income account that we can utilize or show that that surplus in that income account offsets the overage in the expense account. And I don't know how easy that is to track, but I think we need to find an easy way to track it.
And again, the staff recommendation is to approve both events until policies and procedures can be established to address fees and fee waiver requests. The other thing I'd like to bring up that we're not thinking about is our business people when we have these events. I mean, when we have this Halloween block party, it actually brings hundreds of people into town. And I know they've got to fill our restaurants and our stores that are open. And I'd like to hear from our business people what they think about these type of events because not only are they what Lake Placid represents, but we want to make sure that we're not hurting our businesses but helping them. And I think, and I believe we are, and maybe even the chamber, when a lot of their events, you know, they do a great job representing our town. And I think that needs to come out also, that Lake Placid is known for a lot of different things. And I think, isn't there a delegation from Hardy or DeSoto County that's coming over to, I guess?
Just to put this in perspective for you.
Yeah.
I have spoke with Ms. Pyeple. The actual numbers at the last year's Halloween event were a little over 6,000 people that showed up in our town. 6,000. That's not a couple hundred, it's 6,000 people it brings into town. That is also why I have four officers for that event because of the number of people that show up at this event.
Just like the Christmas parade.
Yes.
I think our Christmas parade is probably the largest one in the county. And we probably draw more people than Avon Park and Sebring. I don't know that for a fact, but I've been to all three and I know the chamber does a good job on that. But there again, it's what Lake Placid's known for. So let's get policies and procedures in place to take care of these events, but in no way, shape, or form do I want to see them go away. So, all right, any other comments from the podium?
I just wanted to ask Councilwoman Worley, is there any, if it's up to 6,000 and growing, is there any opportunity also to pursue TDC like the Caladium Festival did? You know, because, you know, when Casey talked to us, she said there were five different type of categories that money could be from. So I just throw that out there as, you know, as we're starting to see volumes of people coming in, let's start looking at some of these other areas that we could also get to help.
This is primarily, TDC is about heads and beds and creating, you know, the tax staying at hotels and that. Basically, and I'm right there, I'm right on the same street, where I live and everything is right there. When we have the Halloween, I don't see any of those people that are staying overnight in hotels or anything. So the TDC will not sponsor this because they exist on the heads and beds, which means that they're paying tax, bed tax at somewhere, an Airbnb or a hotel or something. And these people are not, they're just coming here. I don't see where it helps the businesses at all. Those people get in a line and they go around and, you know, they are not, the businesses are not, to me, watching it, the businesses are not profiting from the Halloween event because all they're there for is to come and get candy. They come in a circle, they're not wandering around, they're in line from one place to the next, to the next, to the next. They're not, the businesses are all closed. It's just, I don't know what it is. It's an expensive event and I don't know what to say. I mean, I'm thankful that people come and they want to be there, but they'll be in Sebring and Avon Park, the same thing. We're not doing anything special. To me, we're not doing anything special. We're just handing out candy and spending a lot of money to be, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Gilbert Randall, 134 Plaza Avenue, Lake Placid, Florida. Deborah, I'd like to disagree with that. As a restaurant owner for 22 years here in Lake Placid, the Halloween event is one of the busiest nights of the year next to St. Patrick's Day for me. I bring in extra staff, we stay open extra hours, we have people standing on the sidewalk waiting to get in the door. And it's one of the things that, it comes right at the time of year when we've come out of a dead summer, when our books are looking really bad, and we catch that night and that gives us a breath of fresh air at the end of a long, slow summer season here in Lake Placid. So that statement that it doesn't benefit businesses is very incorrect. Thank you.
Well, I only see the businesses on inner lake, so I don't see the exterior businesses. I know, I just, I don't, I'm not out there, so thank you.
I kind of want to go back to what he was saying. So if you were talking about how your business makes a lot of money, my thing is instead of blaming the Lake Placid Police Department for going over budget...
Can you bring it down, bring it down so they can hear you? And I'm sorry, I know that you're new to this, but just say your name again and your address.
Kiridambi 204 Captiva Way, Northeast Lake Placid. So it's just kind of going back and forth. You guys are going at them for spending too much, questioning them about budgeting and how much they would be spending doing things like this, but then he's making a lot of money with people coming for this event. I'm taking my kids to Legoland, so that's all I'm going to say about that. But I think if businesses like that are profiting, they should pay for it. They should pay for the protection of all these people coming in. Why don't we just...
Every month.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. And then you guys want to complain about how much they spend. But all I'm saying is if you guys want something like this funded, they drive 30 minutes down the road, go there. Like I said, there's, what about like trick or treating? If anything, I mean, I don't understand this whole paying all this money for a concert to come to our town for what? The kids don't want to just stay, they want to go. We go to churches. We maybe stay here for a little bit. I think the most profits, the restaurants and the food trucks, not the local actual businesses like the barber shops and the place I got my eyebrows waxed, they're not going to pay attention. They'll get those little cards and put them right in the trash or put it on the ground. So that's just my opinion for it.
Any other comments? Paul, the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes.
I do not find this difficult at all. I approve.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Before we move on, we have attorney Kim Sapp here. She's got another appointment that she needs to go to. So I want to go ahead and if we can, and move her up under public hearings. I'll let her and our attorney take care of this.
Which number are we going?
I believe it's number E.
The alley vacation?
Yeah, the vacancy, the vacation of alleyways.
Got it.
You're up?
It's E.
Do we have an ordinance number on this that need to be read in?
Yes, there, it looks like it wasn't...
There it is. Ordinance number 2025-something of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida. An ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida, vacating certain right-of-way as requested by Donna and Tina Clark and Clark Self-Storage LLC, reserving utility easements and a drainage and flowage easement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and that will be ordinance number 2025-06. My name is Dana Riddell, town planner for the record. You'll see this item was added to the agenda in conjunction with the town administrator and town attorney. We've been working on this item jointly for quite a few months now. To introduce this particular hearing, if you're familiar with the area, you're going to see Main Street running north to south. And on the west side of Main Street is West Phoenix Street. There is an alleyway which is dedicated to the town that runs between Clark Self-Storage and Bill Brantley's property. And then on the south side of West Phoenix, there is an easement that's an L shape and also has a little east-to-west alleyway running through the property as well. The properties have been in use for quite some time. I realize I have a location map, probably an aerial map would have been helpful. I'll scroll through to see if there is one in here. The property has been in use for quite some time as part of Clark's Self-Storage and Clark's outdoor storage facility that he has in town. What I'm scrolling through now are letters of no objection from utility providers. And I think there's an aerial image coming up. I just want you to be able to see the, we have plats. Okay, so the aerial image is in black and white and it's a little harder to see on the big screen, but you'll see Clark Self-Storage here, the alleyway here, Bill Brantley's property here, West Phoenix Street running east to west. And below that, you can even see that this alleyway was platted, I think, around the 1920s. And around the 1940s or 1950s, a building was constructed on top of the alleyway. It has not been used as an alleyway and never been constructed as an alleyway. The reason this hearing came up was on the north side of this property, it's off-screen here if you follow my mouse, this is the property owned by the Barahas. About a year, maybe a year and a half ago, Duke Energy called the town and said, "Look, we need to get into this property so that we can access our utilities." And that property owner on that north side has approximately half of the town right-of-way fenced in. And when we took a look at that, we noticed that a lot of the property owners on this particular block and south of it had been using the right-of-way and had it fenced in and were using it for their purposes. So we approached the property owners and we asked them to move their fences or vacate the right-of-way to do something to come into compliance with the town's needs. And Mr. Clark is the only one who actually responded to this request from the town. And he's done his best to comply with the town's requirements and to either have, he's requesting that the town give up the alleyway so that he can actually continue that use as it hasn't been a hindrance to the town thus far. This hearing has been duly noticed. Proof of publication is in my file in my office and it has been posted in the newspaper of general circulation. That about summarizes the request from the town's perspective. I'll turn it over to both the agent, Ms. Kim Sapp, and the town attorney, Mr. Harris.
Doesn't matter.
Yes, the buildings were constructed, leased from the property appraiser in 1959, so they've been there a really long time. If you look on the actual property appraiser's website, the easement on the triangle piece doesn't even show, or the alleyway on the triangle piece isn't even shown. They've been taxed to the Clark, actually Clark Self-Storage for, I'm not sure, I know since he's owned it, because it didn't show up when he purchased it. He didn't even realize that the alleyways were still in effect at that point. The only alleyway he was aware of is the one right there off Phoenix between him and the apartments owned by Peace Land. There are utilities in place underground by Comcast and Duke, so we have agreed to give them an easement for their existing facilities that are there. Nothing will change as far as the current use, we can still fence it, they'll just have a key to get in if they need to. Roy Thomas from Peace Land has already signed his easement. I have not gotten Billy Brantley to sign his, but he's agreed to sign it. We just haven't gotten together to get it done. And by the opposite, Billy signed a consent to the vacation, but I haven't gotten Roy to sign the consent because that was a last week requirement. But they're well aware of what's there. And again, the purpose for doing this was because of the request from the town, trying to bring it into compliance so that we aren't using the right-of-way. And more importantly for the Clarks is, once they were aware that the alleyway bisects their buildings, that needs to get resolved just for their going future. I know the issue right now that we are still in discussion, I believe, with town is regarding a drainage easement. We have received letters from town staff that says we don't need a drainage easement, but I understand they're in the middle of maybe starting a drainage discussion with the county. So I know Burt and Charlotte and the applicant and I will get together before the next meeting and resolve their concerns regarding drainage going forward. Is that a fair synopsis, Mr. Harris? So, yeah, so we're not, the applicant is not okay with the current wording of the ordinance because obviously it does not do us any good to have ditches through our building or ditches where we are currently parking. So, but we understand that there may be some concerns that we can hopefully address.
I hate these issues. This is to me, one of the more difficult, not legally, but practically. Legally, Kim has met all the requirements, save and except the one joined her, which I think is appropriate, but she's got plenty of time to do that between now and the second hearing. Dana has tended to publication. Dana's correct. It is properly before you and you've got discretion. I want to talk about options, your options, history, and your considerations for whether to say yes or no. Historically, we have said yes to several people in closing alleyways. A block north, you just closed one for Rick Miller when he was getting ready to redevelop that area. In the heart of town, we have declined historically, it's been probably 20 years, because we worried about access behind people's homes, places for utility lines, garbage pickup, or general access. So historically, council has said yes sometimes and no sometimes, turns on the facts of each Your options, you can say yes without question, you can say no without question, you can say yes with conditions, and the conditions are several. And I will say, I look back over, and Deborah will smile, over some of my recommendations on whether to close or not, and I have had the wisdom of hindsight and regretted over half of my decisions on what to recommend. Deborah and I can have that discussion privately, and one of them in particular, I would be saying Deborah was right. So much for that. I've covered options, I've covered history, considerations. Burt, the other Burt with utilities, has said, "We're not going to need that for utility lines, water, or sewer." I tend to agree. I don't always on these alleyways. Some we do, but in this case, you know, if the owners want water and sewer, it'll be up to them to find where you're going to put it. So I don't see the need for a main, I think he's probably right. Dennis had said no need for reservation for drainage. Dennis had said no need for reservation for drainage. I don't know that I agree with... I don't agree with Dennis on that. We simply don't know. The town does not have a stormwater plan. The county is in the process of helping us with the stormwater plan. There are very few places we can put stormwater. Do I know for a fact it needs to be on some of this? No, I don't. But my recommendation would be to reserve that option until we have the study. Now, where? I don't think that the alleyways are going to be wide enough to make a material difference for stormwater as they are configured today. You recall with Mr. Rick Miller, north of here, he combined an alleyway with additional land and did a stormwater pond for his runoff and town runoff. So he chose to do things a little differently. While we have some time between now and the second hearing, had a little conference with Don. And of course, Don's my neighbor. And that's one of the things that makes this even more difficult is we're all dealing with friends who have very strong feelings about how their land should be developed. Noted. Doesn't make your decision any easier, and I acknowledge that. I would love to see a discussion about swapping acre for acre. He get... We give up the rights of way under his buildings and between his parcels, maybe reserve some for ownership or an easement for drainage on the very south end where the tip of the triangle comes together that could be an area for a stormwater pond or somewhere else at Donald's suggestion. So I think we can have those discussions with Donald over the next 30 days. Also might have a discussion. We're trying to clean up areas like just south of that is Mr. Bowers. We've gone to law over that. You can see, I've had some candid discussions with Donald about what his could look like. Donald does a really good job just north of there. Says he's willing to come down and continue the landscaping efforts. That would be magnificent. Everybody then gets to smile about how good South Main Street looks. My recommendation is that you approve this on first reading. I agree with Kim. We're going to need to modify some of the language. We hadn't had these discussions when I drafted or revised the resolution you have before you. I was recommending reserve for drainage as well as utilities. Bert has taken away the need for utilities. I'd say let's talk about modifying drainage and anything else we can that would make that work over the next 30 days. My recommendation therefore is approve on first reading. Punt the discussions until we get back for second. Would that be adequate?
Yeah, I wanted to give it to Bert. To Bert's. But Bert's email back to me was that future utilities, if future utilities or stormwater infrastructure is installed, it would be in the front right-of-way. That he has no issues with these alley vacations. So he addressed... Because I asked specifically about drainage.
And I don't think he takes a position on drainage. If you want to hear it from him.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify that because that was my response from Bert was that not just utilities, but it was for utilities and stormwater.
And he has since said he was not... He did not intend to take a position on drainage, correct?
Yes, I have an idea with water, sewer, storm, would be out of the county for all of us.
The drainage issue is one raised by Bert and Charlotte.
Correct, I know. But I... And from the applicant's perspective, we've had every utilities person and the engineers for the town all say they do not need drainage in this area in writing, in response to this petition. So that's our discussion that we've been having. And we'll try to resolve that and not take the town's meeting time with that. But that's... Our current position is that the town staff, who is responsible for determining whether we need this or not, has said they don't need it. So, but again, we'll try to get a resolution so that we're not fighting in public and having to put y'all in the position of making the decision. So I will.
Yeah, just to be clear, I don't oversee stormwater. I was spoken that evening in my office.
Bert, you said the name Dennis.
I'm sorry?
You said Dennis on stormwater. Who did you mean?
Dennis was here.
The old town engineer Dennis, okay. Because isn't Alan Stormwater you?
Yeah, I was to clean out of these...
Okay.
For design two fourteen.
Right.
I was asked about this project. Have I ever noticed fully per standard water in the area? Except I never knew that area even belonged to town or only gave attention to the area. Such by all of those known stormwater issues.
And then Dana, the second reading is a month from now. It's not next week. It's the October meeting?
It's next week.
Bert, she just said next week.
It's advertised for September 15th.
You've published it for next week?
It is published for September 15th, yes.
What are you doing tonight?
Within the next week.
So we have less than 24 hours. But I'm sure we can pull it off. And then to also contribute to some of that conversation, there's been some conversations with the town's technical advisor. As such, we're aware that we no longer have a town engineer. And for some of these discussions, we lean on the technical advisor for his input. He agrees with Bert that he can't really foresee any stormwater issues at this time because we don't really have a stormwater plan.
And who is the technical advisor from the county?
It's through Stonehenge Land Development Consultants, my firm.
Just like we didn't have a stormwater plan there at Miller's Air, but we used the land for stormwater settlement.
Correct, there was a plan for stormwater with Millers.
We developed a plan during the time we were going through his process, yes.
Correct. We ran them simultaneously. The vacation of right-of-way and the zoning change, hand in hand.
If I could make a comment to the stormwater master plan. So we... I met with the county and had conversation. And the county is responsible for the town of Lake Placid's stormwater. We also had asked, if you recall, when we were going through the budget workshops, for a stormwater master plan and pavement plan to address these concerns. Avon Park and Sebring have already obtained theirs. However, the county is receiving federal dollars. I want to say Marty said it was a little over $2 million, something of that nature. And so we are having conversations about how that can help benefit the town of Lake Placid since we make up a very small portion of the county and our funds are much less. So just to advise you that those conversations were just recently held and we have more information that will be forthcoming in the future.
My point is if we had to buy a third of an acre for a pond in that area, we'd pay through the nose, not because it's Donald, but from any landowner. Because you pay the value of the land, severance from other, how it impacts the remainder of the land you don't take. So I'm looking strictly for the purse. Giving away something we would have to buy is my concern.
I'll bring it back to counsel.
I have one quick question. Has there been any opposition, just flat out? I mean, I've heard a lot of discussion here, but from any of the joint... What happens with these alleyways when they're in a platted area is that one half goes to one person, one half goes to the other. So, and all of these conjoining properties with the applicants, have there been any negative that they don't want it closed or...
I haven't received any of that feedback and I'll miss that.
Uniquely with this property because of the utilities that are between Peace Land and our property and Bill Brantley and our property, they... Both Bill Brantley and Roy Thomas for Peace Land had to sign those easements to Duke and Comcast. Roy Thomas has already signed his easement. Billy has told me he's going to sign it. I just haven't gotten up with him. But he did send over, at Bert's request, a consent to the vacation of the right-of-way. So, and the Clarks, them or their entity that's solely owned by them, own the remaining property in those areas. So there is no... In this case, it's even better because the two people who could, I guess, object actually have joined in because they had to for the easements.
So I'm not clear on... So we're here and there's no objection. And all of our departments are supportive. And there's still a question or not on drainage. It sounds like there's not an issue on drainage because we'd do something in the front. So I'm still not certain what do we need to work out in the next week? For them to pay us for giving them? Because I want to make sure we're consistent with, you know, as we continue to vacate alleys, let's make sure we're consistent in how we've done it in the past. Or we make sure then going forward we're consistent. So what are the issues that you see? And then are they in agreement with that? Because I'd hate to go for a week and all of a sudden we're at a standstill.
The... Keep in mind, if you look at consistency, the most recent one was Rick Miller. We vacated it, but we exchanged it for a larger easement for water. So we kept the ability to have a stormwater pond on Rick Miller's property, right behind his building.
Yeah, that area had drainage issues. I mean, that would pool and that... But go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to say this does or doesn't. You know, a lot of times engineers will run pipes underground and have water run to a pond that's somewhere, even though there's not a pooling issue. So I don't know the engineering. That's the reason Charlotte and Bert are saying, wait until we have the study done before we release... I don't... I would... If I were doing this and voting, I would certainly release the red lines so you don't interfere with their development. But I would do it in exchange for a smaller parcel or a small parcel at a place of Donald's choosing. Probably, I'm speaking for him now, that would be at the south end where it's not in any of his way. Because if you have to buy that for your drainage, you will spend a bucket full of money. Now, your... What was your other point? Oh, Kim is right. Our then engineer said, "Oh, we don't have a drainage problem there." He was new to our town. He did absolutely zero studies. And he had no master plan. And we're coming on the studies and the master plan. Bert and Charlotte are simply saying, "Hold on a minute until we see what the master plan says." Now, if they don't need a drainage area there, great, let them have it. I don't care. First of all, not my decision. You got to make a decision as to whether or not this is an asset of the town you should hang on to. Or just say, "Here you go, we're done."
Charlotte, what's the timing of the master plan? It's a ways out, right?
It is. Because it's... The money's not been released yet either. So there's a waiting period for that. And then they have to put it all together and how that's going to work. So I can't give you an anticipated date because they don't even have that right now.
So then we're kind of boxed into a corner. I said we're kind of boxed into a corner that if your recommendation, we need a master plan, the master plan could be six months to a year away.
Which is the reason I said if we get into a land swap, reserve an easement over an area. And if we don't need it for the master plan, release the drainage easement. That's one option. I mean, you can say no and close them all tonight. Not tonight, a week from tonight. But you're going to have to find some places to put water.
Is there a reason to do this within the next six months? Is there a reason that we need to decide? Can we wait six months?
That would be a question for the applicant. Is there a need to go ahead and do this now or...
Well, part of the reason is the town's requirement... I mean, this is an expensive process. This is not an expensive process. The filing fee alone, I think it's like $850. Is that correct? I think. And then because of the, you know, advertising requirements, we spent $1,300 on advertising in the newspaper rather than $162, which is a normal ad because we had this color picture there. And so, yes, it's expensive for us to start this process over again. You know, the applicant started this because he thought he was helping and doing what was requested. And we did. I mean, Kevin also, Kevin McCarthy, which was the prior engineer, also said there was no drainage issues in this area. So I've had two engineers from the county, utility director, public works director, all say we don't need it. I'm not arguing, but it wasn't just Dennis. It was the prior engineer also that said he didn't have an issue with drainage. So the, you know, as I said, we got here, the drainage became an issue on Friday because we'd already expended the just out-of-pocket expenses, not my time of getting the petition together and back and forth. We went ahead and came to this meeting tonight with the ordinance that they drafted, including the drainage easements, as Bert is correct in saying, we got... If we don't have it in there, we can't take it out. So you put it all in there and hoping that we could sit down and have a discussion before second reading. And that's our plan. Because from an applicant's perspective, I understand and I want to say I respect both Bert and Charlotte's position that they have this drainage master plan come in. But, you know, they're 15-foot easements. And so they're not big enough to do anything as far as a ditch or drainage. If we didn't vacate them, they couldn't do anything with them. But I'm not saying... Because I don't know what the ask is yet. But to give a third of an acre, it's... The property, when you look at what's used, is smaller than what's used because Mr. Clark has a lease agreement with the railroad to use a portion of that. So his actual property, if you can see, is just that green line. It's not... So where all the boats along the railroad and cars is actually a leased piece of property. It's not even his property. So we can't give that to anybody. So until I know exactly what the ask is, I don't know that we have a third of an acre to give to the town. And to say we're going to give you a third of an acre when every other staff person in town said we don't need to is... It's hard to digest. It's hard to stomach. But we're willing to sit down because I understand their position in trying to figure out the best way to go forward.
When we talk about stormwater, I distinguish it two ways. One, is there a pond there today that shows there is a stormwater problem? I agree. I go by there every day, have for 72 years, and there is not a standing water problem. But that I don't think is the question. I'm not talking to Kim. I'm not fussing with you. I think the issue is, could this... Could a portion of that land be used for stormwater storage in the future? Excavated and used as a settling pond? That's a very different question. Had that question been posed to the county engineers, might have gotten a different answer. But is there a stormwater problem there today? I agree, there's not. That ain't the question.
And if, you know, Bill Brantley, just like when Rick Miller developed that property and just like when I developed our property over near, we had to develop a stormwater plan. And we did French drain. And there's a big retention pond under our buildings. There's a big retention pond under the self-storage facilities for drainage for his building. If anything's ever built on Bill Brantley's property, there'll be a stormwater facility. He may have to do a retention. He may have to do underwater, you know, a French drain with an underground retention, you know, whatever the engineers at that point, based on his development.
100% true. But that's not the stormwater I'm talking about. I'm talking about the public stormwater off the road right-of-way. Not stormwater created on-site by Donald's construction. At any rate, I don't think...
Yeah.
I'll shut up.
Could I see the actual ordinance, whatever the title? All right. This is my thoughts on it. I'll ask you all to see what you think. We do have a week to talk about this. Obviously, this is somewhat of an issue. And I understand that. On the positive side, if we do work through this and get it on the tax roll, it will be taxed next year, and that's what we need. We need some tax money coming in here. I don't know how much that will create. But if it's... If there isn't a big issue about it, let's get it on the tax roll and get it productive for the town. I totally understand because we have had so much problems with stormwater in the downtown area. So I would like to go ahead and move it forward for tonight and then see what we can do. And if it was delayed for any reason, I would support... And if it was delayed for any reason, I would support you not paying the fees, at least to the town or whatever, that we need more time. I would see that if there's nothing pressing for the applicant so that they wouldn't be harmed by us waiting for some stormwater study. And, but we could get it, if we go ahead and do it now, we'll get it on the tax roll for next year. And it may not be a lot, but every little bit helps. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025.
What was that number?
06.
06. Town Lake Placid, Florida, an ordinance of the Town Lake Placid, Florida, vacating certain right-of-way as requested by Donald and Tina Clark and Clark's Self-Storage LLC, reserving utility easements and a drainage and flowage easement and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? Take it to the audience. You know, what I find interesting, down on the south side, there's actually buildings on this alleyway. And we can't find anything, but it's a possibility. Seventy-five, eighty years ago, these alleyways may have already been done, been done away with, but we just, we just can't find that, so. All right, we'll take it to the audience. Is there any comments? All right, bring it back. Go to council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Now we'll go back to 4B.
We have Garrett here tonight from Malden and Jenkins, and he's coming to present the audit for the town to go over a draft audit. It's not the final, it's in the, the last stage of finalizing. So he's going to go over all the items in it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Garrett Marlowe. I'm a senior manager with Malden and Jenkins. And I was the manager involved in the day-to-day audit processes with Rachel throughout this audit. And though it is a draft report, that's why we haven't passed it out to you, I will be going over the required communications to management as we don't anticipate any changes. The only thing we are working on now is Rachel's work on the MDNA. And once we receive that, we'll have to go through our concurrent partner review when we're ready to finalize the financial statements for the town. So to begin with, we are planning to issue an unmodified audit opinion, and this is the highest form of assurance that we can render. And this is why you are contracted our firm to provide an audit opinion on these financial statements. And we did conduct our audit with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. And they are the responsibility of management. And management is also required to evaluate the town's ability to continue as a going concern. And we did not see any other issues that we were required to bring up as far as going concern. And then it is our responsibility to express the opinion. And for other reports, you will also see a single audit report. The town did have two single audits in FY '24. There was one federal, which included the Septic Sewer as well as the ARPA funding. And there were enough expenditures that the ARPA grant has been fully expended in FY '24. So the town would not need to worry about any future carryover for that or having to remit the funds to the treasury. And then there was also the state DEP grant as well. So that's why there were two single audits in FY '24. And then additionally, when the audit is issued, then we will also get a management letter from management. And then there will also be an independent accounts report in the financial statements as well. And then there was a new policy for GASB 100, did not have a major impact on the town for this year's financial statement, so there should not be any major changes year over year. And for future pronouncements coming up, there is one next year. But with the town's compensated absence, we don't anticipate any major changes for them as well. And then there were accounting estimates used throughout the financial statement process, and we had no issues with management's estimates. We also had no disagreements with management throughout the audit process. Rachel and her team did an awesome job kind of getting us what we needed. And kind of the main reason for the delay is when you have this amount of grant activity, the grants kind of operate in a grant term, whereas we're obviously auditing in the financial statement term. So kind of working back to get that for the correct cutoffs of that activity has kind of delayed the process slightly. And then there were some adjustments proposed to town management, and there were no disagreements for the adjustments as well. And we also had no path adjustments. And then as far as we are aware, there were no consultations by management for another accounting firm for an audit, or as we like to call it, opinion shopping. And then we are independent of the town to provide our audit opinion. And then we just wanted to go over, there were a couple items. So there were just a few findings in FY '24, kind of, you'll see kind of relate to this grant process. One of them was with inventory, and there was an adjustment to inventory. Obviously, we have kind of these large projects as well, kind of some hurricane activity and that kind of stuff. You'll kind of churn through your inventory balances. So there was an entry to kind of correct those balances to get to year end, but there was no fraud or anything like that. It was kind of more just a bookkeeping for that activity. And then there was also a finding in relation to the grant activity. And this was kind of, as I was saying earlier, kind of working back from that kind of grant schedule to the fiscal year sched- fiscal year schedule, excuse me. There were no issues with that. It was kind of just correcting the timing for the revenues and expenses in relation to those grants. And then the third finding was in relation to the reporting for the Septic Sewer grant. There's a report that's required quarterly to be submitted within 20 days, and two of the four reports were slightly after that. And I just want to reiterate, I kind of borrow from my banking colleagues for kind of how they determine findings, whether it's high risk, medium risk, low risk. And though there were three, these kind of are all three, as we like to consider low risk, but there's no kind of issues with fraud or anything like that along that's more just kind of just accounting related for the financial statements. And then we did have two recommendations. Obviously, we know the timeliness of the audit since we are past the state's deadline. But with this much activity, we wanted to make sure that we were correct and that we got everything in its entirety. All right, you guys have any questions for me?
What are the two recommendations?
The two recommendations are for the timeliness, just to kind of, we've kind of worked with Rachel for her, the kind of the grant process to kind of implement. So for future years, kind of we know how to account for that cutoff to go from the grant to the financial statement process. And then as well for the approval of journal entries. There was no indication of fraud throughout the journal entry process, but just to get a set of eyes to come in and double check that, yes, these are being booked correctly.
And then just real quick on the, on the ARPA balance, I think it was 766,000. Will it be in the report of how we're going to apply that? Because we, you know, had a list of 18 items that were possible items. So will it be in your report or is that a separate statement, Rachel, of?
Rachel was able to amend the report and resubmit it since there were applicable expenditures we were able to use, so it should be used in its entirety in FY '24.
And when will we see that list of how we're going to apply the 766,000? Because I'm thinking that's from us, that's not from the auditors.
That'll be in the financial statements.
Next, next meeting? Next month, when?
No, it's in the financial statements that he's writing up.
Oh, it'll be in your report?
Yeah.
But in the end, it's a town decision, not a auditor's decision of how we apply it. I, I mean, again, thinking out loud, is, Bert's not here, but we've got, you know, reserves that are under-reserved, that, you know, we had some lift station, we had some other things that, you know, and maybe I'm getting ahead of what you're recommending, how we apply that 766,000 to which of the 18 projects.
So these weren't necessarily applied to projects. The city had, or, sorry, the town had already incurred these expenses. And since they were eligible under the ARPA grant agreement, we're able to kind of use that ARPA funding for the current year. So even though there weren't additional expenditures, it'll show up as a revenue item in FY '24.
Yeah, yeah, I agree totally. I, I, I think we even had more than the 766 in spending, correct? So then there's a decision that's made of, of the more, of the whole list that are eligible, which ones we can apply.
I was going to say, I think what he's saying, though, is it's already been applied now. There's nothing to decide. There's nothing for council to vote on this project, or we need to put it here. I think that we're speaking two different things. But he's saying that it's already been done. It's already been done in this fiscal year, so council won't need to decide where that money is going because the money was already expended. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess, but you have to go into the treasury system and basically show, so that we have all the records in, so they don't want to come back and get it. We haven't completed the reporting in the treasury system. We only had a list of, these are eligible projects, and it was still shown as uncommitted.
I think we're saying the same thing. The reporting is a list. It kind of shows what you can do with the project. So all of that is the same thing.
I'll, I'll get with you later, and you can show me the list, if that's okay, of what makes up the 766 that we applied. Okay, thank you.
I think maybe more than just you would like to see that list.
That's fine.
I'd like to see it too.
Sure. I agree totally.
You have other comments?
I'd like to thank him and I'd like to thank Rachel because, again, I know how much time and, and support you needed to get your job done. Rachel, on top of the budget and everything else she was doing, and Rachel to your staff. So I know that you'll be relieved to get this behind you. But it seems like in three months, you're getting ready to start on it again, so. But, but thank you for all the hard work and also to your firm.
Thank you. And Rachel and her team did a great job. Obviously, when there's more grants in the single audits, there's also additional time requirements. So we requested kind of of the town to provide all that additional documentation for those single audits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll go to C, town administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pull up a video that was provided from Florida League of Cities before I go into the rest of the presentation that I have. So if you'll bear with me just a moment, I want to pull that up.
Most days, don't make headlines. Most days, things just work as they should. And across Florida, city by city, they do. Police, firefighters, first responders, clean water, safe streets, new roads. From public parks to public safety, most of the time, most of our local services just work reliably, visibly, and of course, locally. No one likes taxes, but in Florida, year-round residents pay less and get more than just about anywhere else. Property taxes, about half that of Texas. And tax rates, more than 70% of Florida cities cut them or held them steady since 2020. That's part of the Florida formula. Low taxes, high value, with most decisions made and most dollars spent most a home. But some want to upend that formula, shifting dollars and decisions to distant politicians. That means less accountability, less value. Let's keep taxes low, decisions local, and services reliable. That's the Florida formula. Let's keep it working.
So at Florida League of Cities, there was a lot of conversation about Florida and how we keep everything so low. And I had two councilwomen who went with me to that and attended. And some of the things that we want to talk about is in regards to the millage notice is, I just want to take a moment to explain the numbers. Let me pull up. Florida League of Cities was working on a ready-to-use with talking points. However, as I stated in our previous council meeting, that the, the town of Lake Placid has not been to that table in over 24 years. So they did not have a ready packet for us. We did get to compile some of the information together. We'll pull that up. So bear with me just a moment. And this goes through an example I received from Avon Park. And approximately 71% of cities have 2024 millage rates at or below their 2020 rate. Approximately 65% of cities have not increased their millage rate in the past five years. Approximately 53% of cities have decreased their millage rate at least once over the past five years, including those using the rollback rate. And for our notice, I just want to take a moment to explain it because the, so that there's no confusion to the public the way that it was advertised. The state of Florida requires all cities and towns to publish their proposed millage rate in comparison to something called the rollback rate. Because of this requirement, the legal notice makes it appear as though the town of Lake Placid is raising our taxes by over 40%. That figure, however, does not reflect the actual impact that residents will see on their bills. We understand that the difference between the legal, the legal language and the real effect on our taxpayers can differ. So without that clarification, the public could understandably walk away thinking that their taxes are going up, when in reality, the increase is much smaller. Our current millage is 3.10. The proposed millage is 3.65. The difference is 0.55 mils. The actual increase is about 17.7% compared to last year's rate. So why does the notice say 45.8%? That comes from our rollback rate. State law requires us to compare our proposal to the rollback rate, which is 2.5035 mils. The rollback rate represents a number that would bring in the exact same dollars as last year, completely ignoring the increase in property values. Since values in the town of Lake Placid have gone up, the rollback rate dropped, and comparing the 3.65 against that lower number creates the much larger percentage that we see advertised. The bottom line is that the proposed change is an increase of 0.55 mils, or about 17.7% compared to last year, not the 45.8% that the advertisement suggests. I'd like to go ahead and go down here a little bit and provide you with some comparisons. And again, this is based off of the Avon Park example. And I did hear back from Florida League of Cities on Friday, and Rachel has to obtain some more information to give to them, and then we will be able to get our full packet as well. So here on the first screen, or the first, sorry, I typically go down there, but I'm trying to stay up here. This slide explains how each property tax dollar is distributed among taxing authorities. It demonstrates the proportion of the total bill that supports of the town versus the county, the school board, and special districts. This is critical to emphasize as many residents assume the town receives the entire amount when in reality, only a modest portion supports municipal services. When we're talking about cost comparisons, the average property tax bill is $127 a month, comparable to cable or coffee, if we want to put it in practical terms. The town's portion is only about $24 a month, and that's really less than a pizza. It demonstrates that property taxes, while often a point of contention, are relatively modest compared to everyday lifestyle expenses. The comparison to pizza night, coffee, or even a trip to the barber or nail salon reflects the cost residents pay directly for services that include police, roads, parks, and code enforcement. It underscores that essential municipal services are delivered for a very modest personal cost. The next graph is our ad valorem revenue versus the public safety. This slide shows that almost all of the property tax money the town collects is used to pay for police and code enforcement. In some years, the cost of public safety is even higher than the taxes collected. So the town has to dip into other limited funds to make up the difference. This reflects the town of Lake Placid makes resident safety its top priority, ensuring that every available dollar goes first toward protecting the community. I would like to add that during Florida League of Cities, a Florida poll was completed that reflected the top tax concern, believe it or not, isn't tax at all. Given the current economic conditions, leaders in Tallahassee did a poll, and they wanted to find out what residents thought. And they said that we should focus on 59% of insurance companies to reduce homeowner insurance rates. That's what they wanted the focus to be on. Only 34% felt like local cities and counties needed to reduce the property tax. Residents consistently identified insurance as their greatest financial burden, with premiums often two to three times higher than property taxes. Another question that they asked to voters was what services they would want to keep. And it actually says on the slide, and for anyone who would like to see it, I'll be happy to provide those to you. It says "Don't touch this" in big letters. When asked what should be protected no matter what if local government services have to be cut or reduced in order to eliminate property taxes, again, this is not Charlotte. This is what was stated from all of the residents in the state of Florida. 54% said do not touch police and fire protection. 15% said do not touch water and sewer services. 10% said do not touch parks and recreation. 8% said do not touch garbage collection and recycling. 7% for roads and streets. There was 4% that said they were unsure, or they refused to answer. Just value versus the taxable value, and this chart will reflect the difference between the just, which is the market value, and the taxable value. Due to exemptions that have been previously discussed in our budget workshops, save our homes caps provide a significant portion of market value that cannot be taxed. This restricts the town's ability to capture the true value growth in the community, and it underscores the structural limitations that's imposed by state law. So the importance of homestead properties has to be heavily looked at for us, especially in the town of Lake Placid, where we depend on this for the very survival of our town. Homestead properties are heavily protected by state law with growth capped at 3% annually. While this benefits residents, it does reduce revenue elasticity for municipalities. I'd like to emphasize that reliance on homestead properties results in slower revenue growth and shifts more burden to non-homestead properties and also to commercial parcels. In comparison to other municipalities in the Heartland region, I would challenge you to go check them out. We've looked at this several times through our budget workshops, and we've looked at the millage rate around the municipalities in Highlands and also their surrounding counties. The town of Lake Placid's untaxed value is significant relative to the neighboring jurisdictions. It reinforces the point that state policy, rather than local decision-making, constrains the municipal revenue that we bring in. So why does this matter? Compared to our neighboring cities in the Heartland region, the town of Lake Placid has a much higher share of untaxed property value. And this comes from state rules like the save our homes cap and property tax exemptions, which reduce how much of a home's market value can actually be taxed. What this means is that even if the town of Lake Placid sets the same tax rate as another city, we end up collecting less money because so much of our property value is shielded from the taxation. This is not a result of local choices or spending priorities. It is the outcome of state tax policy. When you put this together with the chart showing that this our tax dollars are already used for police and code enforcement, it shows you two important things. We start at a disadvantage compared to the neighboring towns and other municipalities. Our taxable base is smaller, so revenue is already constrained and limited. Our first priority should be our resident safety. Nearly every available property tax dollar already goes toward protecting our community. There is no excess. The town is not overspending. State rules simply restrict how much of our property value we can actually collect taxes on. This is why the discussion about millage is so important. It's not about creating extra money, but about making sure that the town of Lake Placid has the resources to provide the same level of safety and the essential services that our neighboring municipalities are able to provide. Our revenues. The graph represents unrestricted revenue sources compared to restricted revenue sources. Unrestricted revenue sources are the constitutionally authorized revenue sources that municipalities may use for whatever municipal purpose. While cities may utilize other types of unrestricted revenue, this packet that was provided defines them as ad valorem taxes and municipal utility taxes, communication service tax, and local business tax. Restricted revenue sources include every other tax that municipalities are authorized to levy. However, these taxes must only be used for the purpose authorized by law. Examples of restricted revenue could be sources for building permits or the facility park usage. And this is another one, unrestricted revenues. Ad valorem revenues compared to general fund expenditures. The graph compares ad valorem revenues to a number of general fund expenditures. Most or all ad valorem revenues are used to fund these general fund expenditures, and you can see them here. The graph compares ad valorem revenues to a number of general fund. Most or all ad valorem revenues are used to fund these general fund expenditures. Virtually all ad valorem revenue collected by the town of Lake Placid is already committed to essential services: police, code enforcement, roads, and parks. And as we've already discussed at great length, and I would have to say it's been painful as well, but I believe just like Councilwoman Worley constantly keeps saying, is that we're going through the storm right now, but we're going to see light at the end of the tunnel. This leaves no discretionary balance, and I believe that the message is clear that there is no excess revenue, and every dollar is already being spoken for and is being used to provide the services that every resident in the town of Lake Placid deserves. Thank you.
All right, any comments of our town administrator? All right, we'll move on to public hearings. We'll go to 5A. Yeah, ordinance, uh, ordinance number 2025-10. An ordinance of the Town Council of Lake Placid, Florida, adopted the final leveling of ad valorem taxes for Lake Placid, Florida for fiscal year 2025-2026, providing for an effective date. This is this recommended motion is move to adopt, approve, and adopt.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt. Ordinance number 2025-10, an ordinance of the Town Council of Lake Placid, Florida, adopting the final leveling of ad valorem taxes for Lake Placid, Florida for fiscal 2025-2026, providing for an effective date.
Can I just interrupt? It's approve on first reading. My apologies.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Yeah. I this was like, I can't adopt it. Right. Hey, I'm in my motion to just say approve. Adoption would be the next meeting.
Approve and adopt. Yeah, thank you.
A second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any comment from the podium?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments, and there's similar comments that I made during the first. I think it was a month ago when we had to set the millage. You know, we had to set it at the highest level, and then we could always come down. And we've worked diligently on going through a budget, which I think is the next discussion item. So I I still believe that we have excess general fund reserves of over half a million dollars that are taxpayers' money that have built up over the years, that we could use some of that and not put in an 18%, 17.7% increase, you know, to the taxpayers all at once. So it's almost like using a combination of, and you know, maybe it's 100,000 from the general reserve, which means this 3.65 would be maybe 3.3. Maybe it's a 10%. We still have the money we need to do the budget items. It's just not putting 18% increase all in one year on the taxpayers in addition to the seven to eight percent county property praise, property values that they're increasing on top of $40 for garbage, on top of water. So there's a lot of increases that are coming to taxpayers that I believe we can still get the budget money we need, just use 100,000 from the excess general fund, which is taxpayers' money built up.
The 17% sounds like a huge amount, but if you take like a typical $120,000 house, take off $50,000 homestead, that brings it down to 70,000 taxable. And actually, 120,000 house is is not the market. It's the assessed. So it's actually probably maybe $180,000 house. Anyway, you take off a 50,000 homestead. At the proposed rate is $255 a year. At the old rate, it's $210 a year. So going from the old rate, the existing rate, to the 3.65 is a difference of $45 a year. So get the 17% sounds huge, but when you look at the real numbers, it's not that bad. And then if you want to compare to Avon Park, it's at 7.25, I believe, and Sebring is about 6.3. And people complain that the towns, the parks are not kept up, town's running down. Well, that's the difference. So I and then on the 50,000, if you're a widow or widower, you take off another 5,000. If you're a veteran, you get another discount. If you've been in your home for, I think, 25 years, and it's under a certain value, you're totally exempt. So I'm in favor of, we have to catch up to keep the town running, and it's it's going to hurt. Well, it it'll hurt $45 a year. So I'm going to stick with the 3.65, because we tried to cut everything we could out of that budget, even some of the things for the police department that they that they need. So I'm in favor of 3.65.
I'm in favor of 3.65 as well, because we've spent a lot of years that I have been here, that some have not been here, that we have spent these years trying to build up this reserve and to all of a sudden turn around and use a third of it just because you you think that this is too much of a of an increase. And I think you put it quite well. When you when you put it down to brass tacks, it's really not that much. And it's all a matter of, yes, in the in the interest of of using taxpayer dollars to the right reason, oh, I get that. But it's also about looking good and all that kind of stuff, and I get that too, and that's all good. However, we've spent all this time creating a reserve, and then we turn around and look at the utilities department. Oh, my gosh, we don't have that reserve. But yet you want to turn around and use down the town's reserve. I don't think there's a consistency in there. So I agree with 3.65. So let me clarify. This is not one-third of the reserve. There's a general fund reserve that's over five, half a million dollars, and it was doing a combination of not increasing 18% in one year and using a certain level, and I threw out 100,000. Now, the general fund in the town reserve cannot be used for the enterprises. That's a whole different discussion that we're going to have to have on theirs. So that's just where I am. It's like, and and again, to Avon Park and the others, I can appreciate that. But they have large staffs. They have recreation departments. They have a lot of employees, so they need that. And they have a lot of residents too. I mean, Avon Park's over 10,000 residents in that. So just that's just my position, and I respect everybody's position, and we'll see where we go.
And I appreciate your position, but I just want to say that that our budget right now doesn't account for critical things, again, that we cannot foresee. We are blessed this year with so far no hurricanes, but we could have another plague. We could have another COVID. We could have other things that happen, and that's what that reserve is for, for the unknown. And we have no idea what might happen, and that's why I don't want to touch the reserves.
And just to clarify, it's like a 1.2, 1.3 million reserve that four months operating is 700,000, and that's where I said the excess according to our policy, the and I'll call it the excess reserve is is the over half a million. So it's not it's not depleting it. It's bringing it according to our policy.
Well, one of the problems we have with our grants and our our other issues with reimbursement, because we have to spend the money first, and then we get paid back. So we have to have reserves for funding these things before we receive our funding back, which is, you know, even if you stayed even, we still have to have the reserves to 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 fund the project until we can get reimbursement back.
And I'd like to add a couple more numbers to what I said, because we do take into account people that have low income or are in dire straits. They are taken care of. There's another exemption that if you have an income below $37,000, you get another 15,000 off. And in this whole scheme of things, so the the people who are just getting by, so it in the number I had before is, what, $45 a year difference? But the people who have the huge homes, their $50,000 exemption doesn't doesn't even touch it. So the rich are getting taxed, and the not-so-rich are being considered. Again, just for clarity, again, I want everyone to understand that I understand that we can't use these town reserve funds to fill the utility, the the problem that we have in the utility reserves. I know that. I'm just making a comparison, reserve account versus reserve account.
I've been on council for over 25 years, and I remember the day we didn't have a reserve. And it has taken us a lot of years to build it up to where it is now. And I'm vehemently against squandering any of that, because we just, like has been said, we just don't know what's going to happen. It's it's just, you know, it it's just a part of life. We have to be able to to protect the town, and that's what our job is, and I think that's what we have done in the past years. Like I said, we scrimped and saved for years on our tax dollars, and still were able to put 30, 40, 50,000 dollars away a year into this reserve account. And it's it's there for a reason, and I hope we keep it there just for that reason. Charlie?
For the record, Charlie Wilson, 763 Sunset Point Drive. Disappointed clarification, Sebring and Avon Park, their millage rate is higher because they also have fire departments, which is a huge cost to them. Fire departments. We don't have a paid fire department. They do. So that's that's part of the difference in the millage rate, which is public services, the very expensive part, not anything a gown, but that's that's a big difference. So it's not quite creating apples to apples. But I'm just curious as to how much in town proper is rental properties, because these costs on rental properties are going to be passed on. So that's a consideration as well. It doesn't sound like much, but you know, you've got a multi-unit rental. Your taxes are going up county. Your taxes are going up. And I understand it's it's a very difficult decision. And the amount of money, but it is going to impact. It is a very difficult decision, and I'm glad I'm not in your shoes right now. But I'm I'm of, at this point, we have enjoyed lower millage rates, and we have been very frugal with the taxpayers' money building up these. But everyone uses services. Everyone is being protected by the police. Everyone is being serviced. So I understand that. Unfortunately, in the in the situation we're in today, I don't know that you have a whole lot of options. Somewhere in the middle or or whatever, but it's from what I'm hearing, it's been hashed and rehashed. So I appreciate everyone's effort in trying to keep it as low as we can. And I thank everyone for their service, because I've been there, and I understand it is a difficult decision. But on the other hand, I do know is a But on the other hand, I do know as a businessman, the cost of doing business has escalated exponentially beyond our control. My insurance costs have gone up through the roof.
Okay, Charlie. Okay. Thank you. All right, any other comments? Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Wait, did you get the audience?
Well, I asked, and nobody stood up or raised their hand. Yes, come up. But when I ask a question, at least raise your hand so I can see you.
My name is Rosemary Heath, and I live at 588 Sunset Point Drive. Councilman Charles, you said you wanted to take how much from the reserve?
I was suggesting that the budget that we're going to approve, you can still get there. The budget was built on a 3.65, that was the highest level. I'm saying we can still get to achieve the budget, but rather than 3.65 or 18% all in one year, we'd make it 10%, and that we take, it's probably 80, 100,000 from the town reserve. That was where I was still, so it's not about cutting the budget, we haven't even got there. It's about how do you do the things that we want to get done, that previously people said, the prior town council kept reducing the budget and that, the, the millage, and that's why we're in the condition we're at. I've continued to state, I think it was smart what they did, because as they reduced the millage, because property taxes were increasing, the ad valorem taxes increased every year. So I'm, and, and as they increased, savings into the general fund took place. So I was just suggesting, rather than an 18%, because the comment's right, the businesses, these businesses downtown are getting the full brunt of it. So I was suggesting to do, to get the budget by, maybe it's a 10%, and then take the, the balance from the excess reserve, the, the, the general fund reserve.
And we're talking $100,000?
That's what I was suggesting, yes.
Okay, what I don't understand, it's $100,000, we're spending more than 200,000 on pickleball courts, and we're talking more than 2.2 million on a police station. And then my other question was, seven years ago, we spent a million dollars on this, and it was supposed to be for the police station as well. There's still space available, is it or not? Isn't there still space available here? Does anybody know?
Can you answer, just for general knowledge? We've not looked at whether this building could hold a police department or not, because this council has not voted that way, and the previous council did not either.
But they did seven years ago, and they charged the residents 100,000, no, 1 million dollars.
Ms. Rose, with all due respect, that's not the conversation we're having right now, though. We're talking about the current budget.
I understand.
And going forward with that.
But I'm also asking that we're talking about spending 2 million on police, 200,000 on pickleball, and you don't want to give your residents $100,000 to lower their taxes? That doesn't make sense to me.
All right. We understand. You've, you've made this comment clear in, in past, and we do understand it, but council has voted, and that's the way it's gonna be.
And so council can't take $100,000 from the general fund to save the taxpayers' money?
Not the general fund, they want to take it out of the reserve account.
Well, that's part of the general fund. Is it not?
It's a reserve account. So anyway, council has voted, well, we're gonna vote, we've got, we've got a motion and a second to move on with this, so we'll vote and see how it goes. Okay, poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
No.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll go to ordinance number 2025-11. Ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Lake Placid, Florida, adopted the final budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026, allowing for line item adjustments during the year as needed, and providing for an effective date.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number, is this the adoption? Is this adoption, though, or?
First reading.
First, huh?
First reading.
Okay.
First reading.
Okay, that we may move to approve on first reading, ordinance number 2025-11, Town Lake Placid budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second. Any comments from the podium?
I do. And Eva, I don't know if this question is to you on the 420 or to Rachel, but on the very first page, if you look at the revenue coming in for the ad valorem?
That would be a question for Rachel.
Of the budget. And, and it's just, it's, to me, is an oddity that if we look at the ad valorem, right, because the 18% is on the ad valorem, that's the increase of what we would see in the ad valorem revenue. Does everybody agree with that? Charlotte?
I'm sorry.
The millage increase impacts only the ad valorem revenue. Okay. So intuitively, this is odd to me, that if we look at, and you have that up there, if you look at the 1,034, which is the October 2024 through June axle number of ad valorem taxes, what we're saying is, we're gonna get less in 25-26. So if you follow it over, I guess I would have expected to see an 18% increase over in the ad valorem for revenue for the 25-26 budget.
This, this is the same conversation we had, the 1,034?
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing on the DR 420?
Yeah, so the 1, 1,030 is from the 420 that the county's telling you?
Yes.
But that just intuitively looks off with not being an 18% increase.
There, there is also a calculation in there that has to do with CRA funds. Remember, those CRA funds are in there also.
Okay, then that's the...
There's a offset on the TIF that will fluctuate that number. It, it is the number. DR 420 comes from the state, we dropped the numbers, and that's the number. There's nothing we do that changes that number.
Yeah, I, I get it.
It gets loaded in.
But intuitively, when you look at this, it makes you wonder, are we building the revenue with all, are we building the expenses with all the increased revenue we thought we were gonna get? That's what, that's what looks odd. I would have thought that we would have seen that amount coming in, because later we're building a budget based on that increase.
So we can only use amount on the DR 420. We cannot use that amount less the CRA. So we put the amount in that the state approved that we use, and based on the millage, that is the amount.
I don't know if you've ever looked at that, but it is a, have you looked at the DR 420 to see?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, and it's very cumbersome, there's a lot of training that goes into that when they have to do it. I had fun with that one last year.
Yeah, I mean, it makes you question on a lot of this revenue coming in from the county, how trusting we are versus going back and validating that we're getting everything that we should in all of the, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's ad valorem, whether it's fuel tax, the franchises from the electric company, you know, with all of the sometimes annexation that's taken place. I mean, we've seen that in the past, that, you know, they sometimes don't get it right. Okay, the other ones is, as I look through on the budget, what isn't there, that I, I thought at one point we had a discussion of RPAC, we could get 75,000 to, to a year. And again, I'm, would like to see some amount put in for playground for Lake June Park. And maybe that's the 75,000 from infrastructure, and then we can go after an RPAC matching, which would put 150,000 of updated playground in Lake June Park. It's interesting, because Avon Park is always getting money from, you know, and, and actually, our, our PAC representative is here, maybe she could make some comments, but Avon Park is always in the paper with grant money that they're getting, the county commissioners, and so is Sebring. So, you know, Arlene Tuck always says, we never come forward and ask for money, you know, from them. So that's, that's one item. And I know, Chief, you had recommended those radios, right? That you had, last year, we took radios out, we gave you half what you wanted, this year you wanted, you know, I think the three more to get you up to where you needed to be, and it would be 30,000.
My recommendation was for the officer safety plan inclusion for tasers and body cameras. I've actually been able to work around the radios and get a feasible solution for this year on the radios. It, it, my recommendation was to include the officer safety plan to give our officers good working tasers and body cameras.
Yeah, I mean, where I was going is, I think that we need to support you with the equipment you need, and we've got infrastructure money that we could use. I mean, and everybody keeps assuming that with operational efficiencies that I was recommending between the sheriff, between, you know, IT and other things that could, could be found, that I was recommending to disband in the police department, and I never was. And, but as you need equipment, and we've got infrastructure money, those are things that I kind of thought of more is, and I mean, you, you put a pitch up there, and we just kind of nodded to you and moved on, versus making any adjustments. So that would be another item that I think would be well worth to support the police department with the equipment that they need, and you could take that out of infrastructure. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't say that a 1.6 million budget item for a police new building, when the bids came in high, is premature. And the first thing I wanted to correct to Councilmember Hayes is, I have not ever been against building a new police department. When we, in April of 2024, town council made a decision to build it at the Dale, at the Dale Hall property, the Hillcrest property, or here, I voted yes. So I did vote to move forward with the police department. At that time, it was legislative grant money, and it was 1.6 million legislative grant. Since then, it's now all town money. It's the infrastructure reserve of 2.3 million that we would pretty much deplete. And the mayor just, you know, again, graciously talked about the history and how we need that for emergencies and things like that. What is interesting is in 2018, there was a very good, in-depth analysis of the old town hall, the police department, and what do we do going forward? And I, Phil Williams did a great study, and, and I would encourage maybe Eva to get all of us a copy of that. And, and, you know, Mayor and Councilmember Worley, you were on council at that time, that you, you know, and at that time, it was the police department's 3,000 square feet, the old town hall was just over 5,000 square feet, 8,000 some square feet, and they did an analysis study between buying State Bank, building on Hillcrest, building a brand new, well, building on Hillcrest or purchasing this building. And what was interesting is, there was like a whole criteria, and one was, can we fit the utilities department in? Can we fit the police department in? Can we rent out space to the government officials? And it's a very, I actually had brought a couple, you know, copies here, but it was a very great analysis of the four options, and again, the square footage. This building has 17,500 square feet with a thousand behind it, and there was actually a floor chart, because this used to be a church and school, so all the classrooms had people's names in them. And in the end, the decision that was made was actually Charlie Wilson said, no, but it was to buy this church, Arlene Tuck said no, Deborah said yes, Roy Roy said yes, and the mayor broke the tie, and we proceeded to build this building. And all I'm saying is, something happened from 2018, where there's an organization chart with people's names, including the police department, that would be accommodated in this department. Something happened three years later, that we went down the route to build a separate police department building. I was impressed by this, and I think that we owe the taxpayers and ourselves a similar analysis of what happened, why they couldn't fit in here. Yes, we could move forward with building a new one. Do we remodel? How much would it be to remodel? We, we really haven't looked at that. Or is there another place to build versus depleting all of our funds? So I just throw that out there, that I thought this was a very good analysis, fiscal responsible of taxpayers' money, an open special meeting, a lot of people came, they gave their opinions, and then the vote was done, and then something happened that what was decided was put on hold, and we pursued building a new one. So I don't, I'll continue to go on record that I don't support. I think the current one is unaffordable by taking all of it from reserves. We're earmarking 1.6 from reserves, which leaves 200,000 left in infrastructure. And, and somebody had said, well, we're thinking we can get the 2.2, 2.3 million dollar bids down to 1.9. We still don't know where that other money's coming from. So my recommendation is, we just pull that amount, we can continue with the budget, and we can always come back and have the special meeting, have what the recommendations, and if the decision is to move forward, then we do a budget amendment and do that. So it's just the, is, does anybody else see the fiscal responsibility that the taxpayers are tasking us with to just move forward without looking at alternates, and then come back, and you can always put it back in the budget?
So if I understand it, your recommendation is the budget is okay, except for that one line you'd like to have pulled out to be added back in at a future date, or not, or whatever. Just, you're saying, just pull that one line?
We don't even have a concrete decision of how much money, so we're earmarking 1.6, but we had bids that came in at 2.2, 2.3, and 2.4, but we think we can get them down to 1.9, that's curious. So that's a 300,000 increase, and we don't have enough in infrastructure for that. So I'm saying that this budget can go forward without that line item, and then we have the right decision with the right information, are there other options that should be considered?
All right, I have a question. Are we discussing the police department again?
We're discussing the budget.
No, you're discussing one line... No, you're discussing one line of the police department building, is, as it references to the budget. You're discussing it in reference to fiscal responsibility, which I'm going to remember that term, because it's going to come up again, fiscal responsibility that we have to the town. You're also incorrect in your 1.6 million, because we had $300,000 from the sale of the old town hall. We are expecting 300,000 or more with the sale of the current police department. We also went through all of that, and all of that part that the police department was going to be coming up here, and that was one of the reasons that, that it passed, that we could have this building, we could purchase this building. And then, when boots came to the ground, it turned out that this wasn't going to work out. For what reason, I don't recall, but I know that there was a reason that it wasn't going to work out. But if you take that money out now, you're never going to put it back in. And I will never vote to take that money out. That money should stay there. If we don't use it, oh, good for you. You get to use it as a positive at the end of the, at the end of the year, and you show some good fiscal responsibility. The meeting with the, with the contractor and with the police department with reference to the bids that came in, isn't until tomorrow. So, you don't know if it's reasonable or not. The meeting isn't until tomorrow. So, we're totally cart before the horse in trying to do this. The 1.6 has been allocated in this budget for that reason, and as far as I'm concerned, it stays.
Any other comments from the podium?
I have one. I think we're just, we keep coming back to this, and just leave it in there. We can always vote no, we can always change it. I could go over the history of the whole thing, by the way, but it's just, actually, it's kind of boring in a way. But I know the last time we had a meeting at town hall, even though we'd spent, and the mayor will remember this, I forget how much money we got for renovation, put a new roof on. Dirty water was dripping on my head. I needed an umbrella to sit up at the podium, even though we'd spent all that money. I mean, I'm just saying, you can't take an old building and make it new. And, and that's a long time ago. That was, what, 2017? We've been doing this for so long, even before then, we were talking about it. I say, leave it in there. If we vote not to use it, fine. Is, is your glass, glass half empty or half full? I say, let's leave it half full, and if we decide to not do it, fine. Why are we at this last minute changing the budget that we all agreed on, or we did vote on it before? Maybe you weren't in agreement, but that's what the consensus was. So, I say, let's move forward. If we decide not to do it, or we decide to reduce it, or whatever we do, let's just move on here and get our budget approved and go forward, please. Thank you.
Lady in the back, she was first.
Good evening. Carolyn Morrison, I'm going to speak as the RPAC representative, since Ms. Charles a little bit put me on the spot, but I think it's a good thing.
Address, please.
I'm sorry?
Your home address.
As the RPAC representative, 119 Sunset Point Boulevard.
Thank you.
Ms. Charles is right about the 2, 275,000 grants that can be given per RPAC. Because we've been in this budget cycle for the last month, and I know you've asked for input from the residents, and as the RPAC rep, I have the privilege of seeing some of the grants that have been approved, and some of the propositions that have been brought forward. So, several weeks ago, I sent an email directly to the mayor and to the town administrator, and I regret now that I didn't send it to all the town council members. But I gave a specific example that Avon Park just put in a grant and was approved. The entire cost of the project, which included two massive playground sets of equipment, included the construction, and included all of the mulch, was a total of $68,000. So, the town came to RPAC for half of that, $34,000, and the town's going to pick up another $34,000. So, I said in my email to the mayor and to the town administrator, "Would you please consider possibly a 30 to a $40,000, you know, budget item into the budget so that we can get some new playground equipment into the Lake June Park?" So, I just wanted to let you know that I am trying to look out for the town of Lake Placid as your RPAC representative, and I thank you for allowing me to serve as such.
Thank you.
My name is Chet Heath. They live at 588 Sunset Point Drive. And I wanted to make a point, that the example that was given, where there would only be a $45 impact, was on a $120,000 home, or even if it was a $180,000 home. It's pretty hard to find one of those in this town. But the people that can't afford that home are renting, and the landlords will pay the full tilt on this, and they will pass it on to some of the poorest people that live here. And that's not fair. It's wrong. I mean, I can afford it, you know, but they can't. And there's no reason that we have to put all that burden on people all at once. The thing that I heard was that we could soften this blow with excess funds. If we did that, it would certainly soften the blow, and the people are going to be hardest. Please think about that, because it's, there's, there's not much rental space in this town as it is. It's very unfair to, to, to people that, well, they're not like, they don't have the economic situation I've got. I want to see the people that needed Lake, Lake June Park for their, for their, their leisure, because they can't afford anything else. And I'm talking about people that don't have options, and you have options, and you could prepare for them right now. Thank you.
I'd like to add some numbers to that. You handed out this chart some time ago, and I don't know if it was in the packet. Let's say you had one in here, a $469,000 property. So, that's a pretty good rental property at $469,000, probably over most rental property values. So, with no home set exemption or anything, that's $32 a month more that's passed on to the renter.
Charlie?
I would just like, well, Charlie Wilson, 763 Sunset Point Drive. Last year, the county tried with fire tax, buying down, like you're suggesting, out of general fund, to offset the fire costs to churches and all that. Well, guess what? They depleted their fund, and now all the churches are being taxed on the fire tax at very high rates, I might add. And some are being not classified as church, if they have a portion of it. For example, the Genesis Center is not, they're, they've actually called that commercial and are paying exorbitant taxes, fire taxes, on that property. So, in theory, it sounds good for the short term, but longer term, it just creates a problem down the road if you're not nip it in in the bud. Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Bring it back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
No.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Thank you. We now go to ordinance number 2025-15, repeal of solicitation portion of Chapter 117 of the Code of the Town of Lake Placid.
Sure.
Let me read the ordinance. That's ordinance number... 14. Ordinance number 2025-14, Town of Lake Placid, Florida. Ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council, Amending Town Code Section 117-1 Regarding Definitions, Repealing Town Code Section 117-3-5 Regarding Soliciting and Providing for an Effective Date.
I think it's 15, not 14.
It is 15.
Yeah.
That one's 15, and that's one's...
Oh, 115. Okay, make that correction. I said the wrong number.
Oh, okay. I thought I needed to...
I said 14, and it's 15.
I thought I needed to fix something in the document I was studying. Okay. This is first reading. We had an issue regarding solicitation and begging on the streets, and this was, one of the settlement was to repeal a couple of ordinances. I agree with the appeal solicitant. This ordinance repeals a portion of Chapter 117. It does not repeal the peddling or sales on the streets, only the solicitation, the active part posted residences' request to leave, soliciting at certain times prohibited. Those used to require you post no, no soliciting or peddling on your home or business, and you can handle that simply by saying, "No trespass, go away." So, relying on state statutes. I always will take a position that we should rely on an existing state statute rather than try to enforce and adopt our own. So, I think this one is a no-brainer, and it helps make a challenge go away. I recommend approval on the first reading. Any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-15 on first reading.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. Any comments from the podium?
Yeah, Bert, I, I support it. I just have a clarification question is, so, if we have the solar salesman that comes knocking on our door, are they allowed or not? I mean, we, we were told, you know, to put up that no solicitation, no trespassing, so that when that person comes there knocking on the door, you know, they, they wouldn't be able to. So, it's just that curiosity, because everywhere you've got very assertive, you know, young people that are getting dropped off, and they just start showing up at all types of hours, and you can't get them out of your, you know, your house. So, I just want to know, is, is that under a state law, or how does that make sure it gets handled?
I believe it is, I believe it can be managed equally well under the state no trespassing law. I'm going to defer to our chief of police, who's nodding his head. In either event, with or without the sign, you're going to have to call law enforcement. So, it comes down to what law would they enforce? And I would think the state statute of trespass would be better.
It's always better to go with the state statute as opposed to a town ordinance. We would go with the state statute every time for trespassing. Remember, when you're talking about the trespassing on private property, which is where you're going to post your no soliciting signs, no trespassing signs, they're coming onto your personal property. You have control over your property. If you don't want them there, they can't be there. By having those signs, you actually save us a step in the process of telling them, "Hey, you have to leave." They've already been warned. The warning is the sign when they come up there. So, when we get there, it actually helps us better enforce that law, and go ahead and arrest them for the trespassing after warning. We can say after warning because there is a sign there that says, "Don't come on my property," and they chose to anyway. So, it is a little better to go with state statute and have those signs.
Okay, so, so we had put up within our subdivision, a no solicitation, no trespassing sign.
Yes.
That's fine, even though it says, we don't have to get another one that just says, "No trespassing." The word solicitation is still good.
No, you're fine.
And then you'll still be able to enforce.
And it is all your subdivision. The roads as well are privately owned. They are not public.
Right.
At the entrance gate, they would have to come by those signs as they came in, anything going on in there, if they were not invited by a resident. And let, let me quantify that, because it has to be said, if anyone in the subdivision invites them in, they're allowed to be there. So, it has to be, no one has invited them in, they've come in of their own volition, and we have to be able to prove that and, and say that no one invited them in.
Okay. So, thank you for this work, who's ever worked on it, because I know this was not an easy task to go through these 50-some pages to see what needs to come out and what needs to stay in.
Chief did a lot of that. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the podium? Take it, the audience. We're getting rather thin out there.
Audience is depleting.
Bring it back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2025-14. Now, I think I got it right. Ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council, repealing Chapter 107 entitled, "Peace and Good Order" of the Town Code and Providing for an Effective Date.
This one is, if I may, this is the one that Chief and I worked together on, more, more so than the last one. After the ordinance, you will see a document the chief prepares showing other state statutes that he can use to enforce the various provisions being repealed of this statute. Towards the end, there were a few that were a little iffy, but I'm going to tell you, in my opinion, all of this chapter should be repealed. It is not necessary, when compared to what we have on the books by state statute. I'll stand for questions.
So, you're saying that we should repeal the entire, entire ordinance? Or you, you left part of it here on the front, I think?
I think this one, let me...
Well, it looks just the front page. I don't know. I guess this is...
Councilmember Worley, what page do you have there?
Page two. At the bottom. Okay, I guess this is the repeal of it. Okay. I'll make a motion that we repeal ordinance number 202014 on first reading. Approve the appeal of ordinance number 202514 on first reading.
If I may, it would be to approve on first reading ordinance 25, 2025-14.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I second. I'm sure what you said.
I didn't hear anything. That's, that's why I was waiting.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion in a second? Any further comments?
And it's, it's to repeal Chapter 107. That's what we're doing, right?
That is correct.
Okay, yes, I second. 107.
All right, saying no, we'll take it, the audience. Bring it back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. 6A, Resolution 2025-17, the Lake Placid Town Council Establishing a Tentative Assessment Rate in Connection with Non-Ad Valorem Assessments for Residential Solid Waste.
I'll make the motion to approve on first reading, Resolution 2025-17, Establishing a Tentative Assessment Rate in Connection with the Non-Ad Valorem Assessments for Residential Solid Waste.
Now, this is a resolution adopted also.
You're adopting it. It's a resolution.
Oh, so this one's, oh, because it's a resolution.
Yeah.
I just wanted to read adoption. So be it.
It's getting late.
Yes, understood.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any comments? Take it, the audience. Pull the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, 7D1, Citizen Participation Plan and Policy Adoption for CDBG.
I'm going to read it.
Yeah.
Okay. This is actually put on by our finance director, Ms. Rachel Osborne. It's for the Community Development Block Grant. The program requires a citizen participation plan to... The program requires a citizen participation plan to ensure that citizens have reasonable access to information and opportunities to participate in the planning, implementation, and review of any CDBG activities, especially those from low and moderate income backgrounds. The community, or the citizen participation plan outlines public hearing requirements, notice procedures, and ways to provide public feedback on CDBG-funded projects and performance reports. The recommended motion is to adopt the citizen participation plan to submit with future applications for the Community Development Block Grant programs and authorize the mayor and town attorney to sign the policy.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any comments?
I just hope we get people to come out. That's the important part. We need to let them know that we need their voices and their opinions. And I think a lot of times we hit only a certain part of the market and we need to hit our whole town.
Now we'll go to-
We need to vote.
Oh, yeah. Got a motion, a second. We got a vote. I went to the audience. They said no.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, 7D2, Florida Recreation Development Assistant Program Grant Application.
The town of Lake Placid is eligible to submit one additional FERDAP grant application. However, per the program rules, municipalities may only have two active FERDAP grants at one time. The town currently has an active grant for Lake June Park, which leaves capacity for one new application this cycle. The decision required is for town council to vote on which project to prioritize for submission. We have Dow Hall and/or Bicentennial Park, and we also have Spruce Park. The recommended motion would be for staff recommend applying for a FERDAP grant for Dow Hall/Bicentennial Park because this would maximize the competitive scoring potential. We also further recommend utilizing the Community Redevelopment Agency funds under the CRA to support improvements at Spruce Park, ensuring programs on both priority projects. So the action requested is for council to select and approve the park project for FERDAP application submission. And I would, I know that our RPAC representative left, but I had planned to speak towards this, but she's left already, but I'll go ahead and state this anyways. In our evaluation of this, yes, we understand that we could apply for additional money for Lake June Park, but Lake June Park already has money that's slated there. And so it was our thought process that if we have already RPAC and FERDAP money being utilized at that park, then it would make better sense for us to use any additional funds in other areas. So if that is something that the council would like to entertain, then we would say, "Look at the other parks." However, these are the two opportunities that we have before us right at this moment. So if we could make a decision for these two, then both of these would be ones that we could, Alan and Harry and I spoke about these, you would be able to see these completed in a year. So that is exciting considering the fact that there are many projects, especially with our pickleball and what's happening at Lake June Park, that we can't even get that one completed in enough time, but we would actually see these done and to fruition.
But not with FERDAP money?
FERDAP money we are asking to use at Dow Hall or Bicentennial.
Right. I thought that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
But we wouldn't be able to see that in a year because we wouldn't, if you apply right now, because the FERDAP is open right now, right? You apply for FERDAP, that that won't, money won't be available until, they have to take it through their appropriation cycle and get approved, so we're talking a year way. I mean, I support it, but it's just on, just our expectations on the timing.
CRA will go very quick. How long did it take you, Alan, for the one park approximately?
Less than six months.
Yeah. So we'll see that one at Spruce Park completed.
Right. And actually, you can have three open FERDAP grants at the same time. They have to be in different parks.
They said we couldn't. We confirmed.
Yeah, check those FERDAP guidelines again, but-
We did, we called them. That's why we want to make sure that it's, we're getting right information though, because when we've spoken with them, we cannot.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only two in two separate parks, not three.
Okay. So what amount would you be looking at? What are you thinking? Because we have to match it, right? So you, it's-
We put it in the community redevelopment already, and we are saying for FERDAP up to $200,000.
So then we would, out of CRA, take 200 because we have to have matching, right?
No, no. CRA is totally different. It's two separate parks.
But Dow Hall, we already have CRA money allocated for it.
Correct. But we have to vote here on where you want to apply for the FERDAP.
Okay. I mean, I like Dow Hall, and then that gets you a bigger playground, right? It's, that's kind of where I was going, is we've allocated a certain amount, I don't recall offhand, for CRA money for Dow Hall.
First, I thought we did it for-
We've done it for each of them. And I think all of the CRA, all of the parks in the CRA district, we had some money. Harry, is that right?
No, it's a non-
Oh, I'm sorry.
What was the question?
Didn't we, out of the CRA, I mean, we've got it here, the CRA budget, didn't we recommend so much money, or maybe that's Alan, for Dow Hall? I think, I thought, Charlotte, we had some money in each because the inspection report said, "We need to replace them as soon as possible." So I thought we had money in each of them. And let's just assume that we had $50,000 in CRA money for Dow Hall. FERDAP is a matching grant, so if you go in for $200,000 for Dow Hall, then we'd have to allocate $200,000, I'm going to say from CRA, in order to match, right? I don't disagree with this. I'm just trying to understand is how, the direction, how much you should go for because there's an offsetting amount that we need to budget for, a matching amount, I mean.
Does anybody know how much we allocated for?
Yeah, I think we had for Dow Hall, we had $10,000 for irrigation and $10,000 for trees and landscaping.
You could say we were going to apply for the grant as well.
That, that was in CRA.
Yeah, that's what, I was going to say, that's what I thought, was we said that we would apply for the grant. I didn't, I don't have that readily available for me to answer that properly, but my recollection was that we were going to apply for FERDAP money, so we didn't slate anything in there for Dow Hall and Bicentennial, because we had already discussed this at the CRA meeting, that this would be forthcoming at this meeting, and council would be the ones who would ultimately make the vote, because CRA makes the recommendation.
Yeah, we have to vote on what CRA does. This council has to approve what CRA does, just like the county commission has to approve what TDC recommends. So the CRA is a recommendation, so this is to approve what they recommended.
Correct. And we are on a time limit for FERDAP because there are requirements, so we have to meet still with civic organization, participation, and things of that nature. So that's why we said this one had to be voted on tonight.
So we really did have a motion and a second to start this discussion, but we are discussing anyway. But do we have to come up with a number for that FERDAP grant, or do we just have to come up with the conceptualization that we are going to do the FERDAP grant?
And authorize the town administrator to move?
Right, right, right.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will make the motion, so we can do this legally. I will make the motion that we apply for a FERDAP grant for Dow Hall/Bicentennial Park to maximize competitive scoring potential and further recommend utilizing CRA funds to support improvements at Spruce Park, ensuring progress on both priority projects. Second.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other comments?
I just want to ask for clarification, Charlotte, is because when you apply, you have to apply for how much money? And if you apply for $200,000, then we have to have matching money for that. So I think that it just needs to be clear, is you're thinking the matching money would be from CRA?
That's a yes? Yes.
For the record. And I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that it's not just $200,000. We have to match it somewhere. Now, you could go to RPAC and get $75,000, you know, and reduce it, something like that. So, okay.
All right, we'll take it to the audience. All right, saying none, pull the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
All right, then last is 7D3, Piggyback Agreement, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
After review by the town attorney, we determined that the proposed piggyback agreement for the master Parks and Rec plan did not qualify as a valid piggyback. There were differences in the scope between the host contract and the town of Lake Placid's project needs. What I mean by that is that there was a difference in how many parks that Spring Lake had to how many parks the town of Lake Placid had. And then they also said they didn't have community involvement. We told him we definitely wanted to have the community involvement. He did say, I spoke with Catalyst, and he, Friday, he sent over a preliminary that has not gone through the process with being voted on at the council and things of that nature. So I do have one that will match and meet what we have for the town of Lake Placid. As soon as it's executed, it will be able to come forward, and then you can approve it as a piggyback.
Does it make sense that maybe we peel back some of these areas? Meaning Johns Park, there's not really anything that he's going to do there. I'll even say that little grass triangle next to First Insurance, even Devane Park, I don't know what more.
And the government center. We can take the government.
Stewart Park, even Bishop Park, right? Bishop Park's the county, so I just wonder if we can peel back on some of these. I mean, I'm very interested in canal-trail connectivity, you know, to a lot of the parks and that. So I just wonder if, you know, as we're now re-looking at it, doesn't it make sense to really go after a lot of our parks ourself?
I was going to say, if you pull some of those off, now, if we did that, it would make it viable.
Yeah. I just have a concern that we do this right now. I think we definitely need the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. But if you think for a moment, we're still waiting on Central Florida Regional Planning's Master Plan. We're still waiting for a Master Plan on water and on other things from the gentleman in the back. We're still waiting on that Master Plan. I just don't think we need to jump into another Master Plan right now while we need it. And I totally agree with what you're saying, Councilwoman Charles, that you, that we don't need some of the things in some of these parks. We do need to talk about these trails things. I'm real interested in that, too. But I just think we would have too many things going at one time. This is what got us into trouble before, because we took a bite at too many apples and we never ate and swallowed. And I think we're going to have a bite in too many apples here if we go in yet another project. Now, how far we delay it, I'm thinking, not a year, but I'm thinking, let's get Central Florida Regional's plan first, and then I think we'd have a better vision for what we want this Master Plan for the parks and recreation and trails to look like, and let it match along with Central Florida Regional's plan. So maybe six months down the road or something.
I agree. I think that we, we've had a lot of plans going on. I think we should wait until we see what they have and then mat, then see if this, we're going to bring this company in, they can see what they've said, we can see what, and I know you guys don't want to hear this, but also maybe see what the TDC people have to say. Bring them all in together, let's look at everything at one time and then decide and not do this plan. Let's just wait and see what Central Florida comes up with. And just, you know, just kind of, I think, I think we have been galloping, galloping with our projects, and I think maybe it would be time to kind of pause and let's get it all together and then decide what we want to do.
Well, a couple, couple points. It's up to the staff if they can handle this more work, is one thing. And it's my understanding that Central Florida's plan was going to concentrate on the downtown areas, not the parks. And the third thing is, we want to get our parks in shape, and if staff can handle this, I don't think we should delay anymore with this plan. So it's up to, you think you can handle it.
And to add to it, RPAC has now required Master Plans. That's one of the things that they discussed as they scaled it down. They want to make sure that the money's being spent, you know, in the best interest. And one of the things they're requiring going forward, and Kevin even told them at one of the meetings, "We're working on a Master Plan." So I mean, there's a lot of benefits, and in this case, it's a company that's going to run it. And then, like Don Elwell had told me, when Spring Lake got theirs, FERDAP grants were like highly scored because of, you know, the Master Plan is supported by the people that use it, and then off it goes. So I mean, I can appreciate, and I don't want to overload staff, but I think this is one of the critical things that our town has been asking for, is recreation and trail connectivity and exercise and all of that. I don't disagree. I just think the timing is poor.
I agree. I think we're a little bit off on timing. I think we need to wait until we get some of this together. But if you're going to go forward with this, I would suggest we take out a Government Center Park, take out John Park. It's a passive park. It was donated as a passive park. There's not much more you can do to that. And take out Bishop Park, which we have no control over. So I would take out those three. I would leave in the Triangle because I think Councilmember Charles had a great idea. Maybe they should look at that for some bathrooms and stuff like that. Just look at it. I think that was a good idea. I don't want to take that out in case they see a potential there for something. So I'll go with it if you guys want to. I'm just saying that-
Let's go down your list. Maybe we can pare it down like that. So Lake June Park stays in, Taylor Park, Devane Park is out. Do you agree, or?
I'd leave it in.
Leave it in, okay.
Just because they may see something. I don't know. It's up to you guys. I don't know.
And then the basketball courts isn't, you know, that comes out. Stewart Park comes out. John Park comes out. Bishop Park comes out.
I don't, I don't, I just think that we should take out Government Center Park, John Park, and Bishop Park because they may see something potential. I know that the basketball courts, there is a, there's a playground there that we're supposed to share with the elementary school. That was, we all donated to it. It's a challenged physical park. It's much like the Miracle League, and it needs to be redone. And that is supposed to be, when the school closes, they're supposed to unlock the gate by the basketball courts and open it up, which hasn't been happening, but it should happen, and that park needs attention and probably could be totally revamped for our handicapped children or challenged people. And that's along the line of doing our Miracle League park. But yeah, we could, we could maybe make a better agreement with the school board on that, and that would include the basketball. And the basketball courts look like they need some attention.
They need attention. They get used every day.
I don't know. I mean, I'd leave those in. I'd just take out-
Okay.
Government Center, John Park, because we can't really do anything according to the donation, and then Bishop Park, we have nothing to do with. It's not ours. I mean, we own it, but we can't do anything there anyway.
And a constituent questioned the need for the trails and so forth. Am I correct that if you have a plan for trails, you also score higher?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just answering that person's question.
And there's different grants you can get. There's the Florida Trails Recor, so it's outside of FERDAP and RPAC. There's different other grants with trails that you can get.
Can you, Deborah, can you put that in a form of a motion?
Well, but also, I wanted to say, and Ms. Fintris couldn't be here tonight, but she is amazing because she goes to every meeting. I mean, she goes Economic Development, she goes to every meeting, every county commission meeting, and she is seeing at the county commission that Sebring, other municipalities are getting money for trails and different things, but we have not because we asked now. So maybe if we do this plan, and then we'll be out there asking at the podium as well. She's awesome at feeding back to our town that she loves so much, so I just want to say that. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve, and we can, so we can piggyback or we can't?
We can find one if you make this motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we piggyback using Catalyst Design Group for our Lake Placid Park, Lake Placid Park Master Planning. And we- And we would include, one, um, what's listed here is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, remove eight, keep nine and 10. Remove 11 and 12 for the study, and then also include Lake Placid Loop Trail and Highlands County Connection South Quarter Trail.
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any other comments?
I have a question. How much does this cost?
That's gonna be the kicker, because the amount that we received previously was for Spring Lake, and so now it will, the, the amount will change. It, it'll be more. How many do we have? How many did you count, Councilwoman Worley?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12.
So we still have a total of 12?
No.
Do you want us to pare it down?
I was gonna say...
Oh, with Detroit.
Spring Lake has seven, and then the other component to that is they did not have community involvement. So they'll create, um, a community dashboard, so to speak, so I don't, I don't know what that cost is going to be.
So where is this money gonna come from?
We, we put it in, right now, it was slated at the $40,000, coming out of the general fund.
I'm surprised you didn't jump on that.
I'm gonna amend my motion to, um, to get, the motion will include those with the, um, with spending no more than $40,000 or bringing it back to council.
And, and Charlotte, Spring Lake was how many?
Seven.
And, and those were seven big areas. When you start looking at, and maybe when you have that discussion with them, a basketball court, right, is not like a big area, that, you know, the, the triangle. So, so some of these are like little, small things, that he needs to know that, you know, that these are not big areas. These are little, small areas. And, and if that's gonna cost us more money? I think we've got some intelligent people that could probably think about with the basketball court, because there's not much there to do. That maybe we don't need a company to come in and redesign, because it's still gonna be a basketball court.
Well, and I, I looked at the other, the, um, Green Dragon, the one that's next to the school, and I don't know, I think it just needs a really good pressure washing, honestly. But I haven't been, I didn't get in there to look at it yet, but I did go over and look at it. The, the one that Councilwoman Worley is talking about that's next to the school, that...
You can, you can only use that when the school is not in session.
Correct.
Because of the border requirements of a school. And, and it's locked even when school's not in session. Yeah, yeah, that's an issue. But, um, I believe, I don't know if that school has summer school also, which would mean that it would be very, um, highly unavailable. So, I, I still think this is another $40,000 that we do not need to spend. We're trying to cut everything everywhere we possibly can, and to not spend this right now, I think is the most fiscally responsible thing that we need to do. But I don't think now is the time to spend that extra $40,000. I think we put it down the road six months and see what Central Florida Regional Planning has come up with, and then decide we're gonna spend it then, and we'll know better how our, how our council, how our town funds are. And you're thinking about bringing it out of the general fund, and you don't know what the general fund's gonna look like by then. I don't think it's the right time.
If some of these are in CRA district, is it legal for CRA to contribute?
I don't think so. I don't know. I don't think so.
I'll have to, I'll have to clarify.
If we, if we are using, uh, FERDAP money for, um, Bicentennial Park and Spruce, won't they come up with a plan too, or not? I mean, aren't they gonna do their own plan, or do we furnish them a plan?
So, um...
We just voted to spend money for those. For FERDAP.
The Central Florida Regional Plan is going to encompass everything that's within our CRA district. They will focus heavily on the downtown revitalization. My understanding from Jennifer Cotto Salisbury is that they will also give, um, feedback and recommendations to the other park areas. I don't know what that entails. I know that it will not look like a master Parks and Rec Plan that we get typically from a Central Florida Regional Planning Council, um, because it's very detailed. But I don't want to say that 100%.
And remember, we put this on hold because we thought the TDC was given a master plan on parks, and it ended up being a sports complex master plan. So we, we kind of delayed this for six months, you know, thinking that they were going to be able to, you know, um, do that. But was your question on what would we have to do, provide, Councilmember Worley, was your question on what we would have to design and present the FERDAP?
No, I was just saying, if we're paying FERDAP, if we're using the FERDAP money to do a design, then we're duplicating services here. Right, pull those off too, because
Yeah, yeah.
We're already paying FERDAP to come up with the design, and then if we're, unless we want to wait on that and get our plan, and then tell FERDAP that's what we want.
No, so, so just clarification, FERDAP doesn't do the res, design. We're gonna have to do up something to put in the application. This is what we want to do. But it's a good point. If we're already moving forward with what we want to do in that park, pull it out of Catalyst to do anything.
Maybe what we should do is let Catalyst come back to us. I just made the motion, we won't spend over 40. Let them come back to us and see if it's gonna be over. And then see, and then par it down.
Okay, I'm confused. But if we would have Catalyst do this plan first, and it includes Bicentennial Park, then we would score higher on a FERDAP request. So this should maybe come before the FERDAP.
If we do that, we'll, we'll move, we'll lose it for a whole year.
That's right.
Because we have to do it now. That was the, that was the holdup.
Right.
Yeah.
It's the timing.
It's the timing, yeah.
Which is why we tried to get it done earlier, so that we could.
Could, we tried.
Okay, I got it.
All right, clerk, where are we at?
You have a motion in a second.
We got a motion in a second. Okay? Any other discussion? Say no, we'll take it the audience. Bring them back, pull the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
No.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes, but I thought I was the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got that confused.
That's fine.
Councilmember Charles? And then Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have on the agenda. I'll go to my department heads. Do we have anything? Okay, say. Okay. We thank you. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Thanks.
Administrator? Okay, we'll start down. You got anything?
I, I do. I want to give a shout out to LeAnn in the booth. So, so she's like the hidden behind-the-scenes person that is managing the videos, the cameras, the microphones. And then also, it sounds like day-to-day IT issues when they exist. So, LeAnn, can you just stand up and wave, so people know that this is the behind-the-scenes person that we really appreciate?
All right, thank you. Neil?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Deborah? Joy? Okay. The only thing, uh, if you noticed, on 27, we do not have a flag at the flagpole. It's been at half-staff for a little while, but there is a problem. We can't raise it any higher than halfway, so I believe it has been taken down till we can get it fixed. And then we'll have the, the flag back up again. So if anybody asks you, that's, that's why there's no flag right now. We have a, we have a problem, probably up at the top. All right, if there's nothing else to come before council? Meeting adjourned.